Good morning, everyone. I'll call to order the October 30th, 2019, meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and indivisible and just as proud.
The next item we have is citizen input. Anyone's here that wants to testify about any substantive matters or anything that's on their mind for three minutes, there's forms over to the left. I do have a request from Carl Shoemaker. So could you come up and join us? You can sit right there and speak into the microphone.
I'm Carl Shoemaker. I live at 312 Northeast Fifth Street here in Bend. I have a granddaughter who lives in Redmond. She has lived there all her life. I have a son, her father, who lives in Redmond. He has lived there pretty much all his life. My son would be severely affected if something happened to his daughter because the wrong person has easy access to guns. I would be severely affected if something happened to my granddaughter because the wrong person had easy access to guns. My granddaughter would be severely affected if something happened to her father because the wrong person had easy access to guns. I would be severely affected if something happened to my son because the wrong person had easy access to guns. That's British understatement. "A politics of decency is the most practical of politics," Theodore Roosevelt. Let us now have a politics of decency in this land. Let us not have a land where children are safe in school. Let us now have a land where children feel safe in school. Let us now have a land where children don't go hungry. Let us now have a land where people don't panic when a motorcycle backfires in Times Square. Let us now have a land where people don't panic when a sign falls in Utah. Let us now have a land where workers are treated well by the bosses. Let us now have a land where children drink clean water. Let us now have a land where asylum seekers are welcome. Let us now have a land where children are not kept in concentration camps. Let us now have a land where we do not betray our allies. Let us now have a land, have a politics of decency in the world."
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you. If there's any other comments for anything that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to make them. Otherwise, you can be a hearing at 10:00. We have one public hearing set for today, I guess, this morning, and then we have another this afternoon. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any alterations, changes, or withdrawals?
No.
Have you had a chance to review it? Okay.
I move we accept our consent agenda as of October 30th, 2019.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments?
No.
So Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So the next item on the agenda is time extensions for dwellings in resource zones, expansion of nonconforming schools, in exclusive farm use zone text amendment. This is a public hearing. We have a packet in our materials about this. We were briefed, I think, on a separate meeting, work session meeting, about the extent of this, and so Izzy's going to take us through it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Izzy Liu, Associate Planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning file number 247-19-000624-T-A. The applicant, Deschutes County, is requesting approval of ordinance number 2019-017. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff, in this case also the applicant, will provide a brief report. Opponents and proponents, if any, will present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony and final comments. A full written version of the hearing's procedures is available at the table at the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any conflicts of interest.
And before we do that, I realize that I didn't read the first sentence of this legislative hearing opening process, which is this the time and place set for a hearing on county file number 247-19-000624-T-A, and that staff has now outlined the procedure.
Yep.
So does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature the same and whether you can proceed.
I have none.
And I have none.
Yeah, and I have none. These are amendments that came from the legislature that I don't think any of us were involved in, so.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioners based on conflict of interest?
Okay.
Seeing...
We'll open the hearing, and staff can proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you. In front of the board today is a proposed text amendment related to House Bill 2106 and House Bill 3384. The county is required to incorporate these amendments in order to stay consistent with state law. House Bill 2106 was enacted in June of this year. This legislation allows five additional one-year extensions for residential development within the exclusive farm use and forest use zones. In Deschutes County, this affects Title 22, the procedural ordinance, specifically Deschutes County Code 2236, limitations on approvals. There are approximately 66 valid approvals for dwellings in the farm or forest zones. That number is expected to be higher, just because we have some pending applications in our queue currently. As part of this proposed text amendment, staff included two additional dwelling types that are eligible for the four-year approval period. These two dwelling types were not part of House Bill 2106. They're erroneously omitted from our code, and so in order to stay consistent with state law, we've added them into the duration of approval section. The two dwelling types are highlighted in red below. It includes alterations, restoration, replacements of lawfully established dwellings in the forest use zone, as well as caretaker residences for public parks and public fish hatcheries.
Are you saying that the legislature didn't address those particular items, but we have them in our code, so therefore we've got to include them in this amendment?
Right. So, yep, they're already incorporated into state law, but for whatever reason, they're not in our code. So we just needed to amend it to make sure it matches.
Do we have any public fish hatcheries?
Not that I...I mean, there could be some out there. I mean, I personally have never...
Isn't Ball River?
I think there's a residential building that was built probably in the '50s or something, so it's way old, but future development.
Typically, right, this would be for a brand-new one, and from my time here, I haven't seen any applications for these types of dwelling types. And just to clarify, so in the forest use zone, typically, there...well, the options are a lot of record dwelling, large tract dwelling, or template dwelling, so a brand-new one would have already had the four-year approval. We're just adding the option for the alteration, restoration, or replacement of any lawfully established dwelling in the forest use zone.
So on this bill, your last note is that these new extensions are responding to some Lubbock case, and they're doing away with the two-year extension, but they're allowing five one-year extensions? Is that basically the change?
Yeah, that's correct. I believe the next slide should have some more information about the extension history. Yeah, so the extension history, what I describe as the old code is what's written in our code today that we're no longer enforcing, but essentially, it allows the four-year approval period for the dwelling types listed in the previous slide, three additional two-year extensions. Based on the current Lubbock case that clarified state law regarding extensions, we are operating under this section, which is the four-year approval for those dwelling types, and then one two-year extension. The proposed amendment, House Bill 2106, related to House Bill 2106, would allow the four-year approval for those dwelling types, a two-year extension, and then five additional one-year extensions that include conditions, which we'll go over. So in regards to those additional one-year extensions, the applicant has to demonstrate...well, I suppose they have to write a written request for the additional extension prior to the expiration of the previous extension. The county can approve that extension if the applicable residential development statute has not been amended, or if the land use regulation hasn't been amended. For that last bullet point, if the land use regulation has been amended, the county has the option to allow the applicant to come into compliance with whatever that regulation may be. House Bill 3384 was also enacted in June of this year. This legislation allows the expansion of nonconforming schools in the exclusive farm use zone, including all buildings essential to the operation of the school. This affects Deschutes County Code 18120, the exception section. There isn't a significant number of nonconforming schools in the exclusive farm use zone. Two examples are New Leaf Academy, which is northeast of Bend, and Three Sisters School, which is closer to Tumalo. House Bill 3384 included this language, which we are proposing to incorporate into the nonconforming uses section. The expansion has to comply with ORS 215-296, essentially that is stating that the proposed use will not create any significant changes to the surrounding farm and forest uses, that the expansion is proposed on the site or in the area that's least suitable for the production of farm crops and livestock. The school has to have been established on or before January 1st, 2009. The expansion occurs on the tax lot where the existing school is established, or on a contiguous lot to the school, but has to be under the same ownership since January 1st, 2015. And it also states that the school is a public or private school for kindergarten through grade 12.
So Izzy, you're saying those are the only two schools in our county that would be applicable to that?
Based on my research, so a lot of the nonconforming schools that I found, they came into compliance by applying for a new conditional use permit. These were two that seem to remain nonconforming with additional site plan on top of it, but...
Thank you.
Part of House Bill 3384 includes a section that the county cannot deny an expansion based on these three reasons, one being maximum capacity of people in the structures, minimum distance between structures, or maximum density of structures per acre. The board has three options: continue the hearing to a date certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain, or close the hearing and begin deliberations. Staff does recommend that the board close the hearing and leave the written record open until December 31st. When we had initiated this text amendment, we were not aware of the rulemaking process that was taking place. Had we known, we would have waited to initiate the 35-day notice to DLCD. But in order to mirror the language of the rulemaking, I think I'm recommending that we keep the record open so that we can be consistent with state law.
What's the status of rulemaking, then?
Yeah, so based on our contact with DLCD, it sounds like the rulemaking packet is expected to be sent out November, December, so just to be conservative, leaving the record open to December 31st, and expecting to schedule a work session and deliberations afterwards.
So then there may be a slight change?
There could be slight changes in the language, not expecting any significant changes.
Yeah. And would that trigger another process, or we could conclude that process with a slight change possibly? Or who makes that choice?
So we could...so essentially, closing the hearing and then leaving the written record open, could submit that information during that record period, and then would ideally schedule a work session and deliberations following.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Is...following up on what Commissioner DeBonne asked about, is this...is the rulemaking just on the House Bill 3384 issue, or is it on both of the...
Both.
Both. So we have no timelines that we have to do this by, or...
Yeah, I didn't...I wasn't provided an exact date for when we would be accepting or receiving that packet, so end of the year.
Okay.
It's two months. Should be time.
Anything further in terms of background, or...
No, that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Commissioner Dare, any questions?
No, I think I've asked mine. I just wondered, you know, how many different schools would it be applicable to, so if there's only two, and, you know, thank you for that information.
Yeah.
Any questions? No other questions? So would we now open it up for hearing for anybody that wants to testify?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So typically, for a matter like this, we'd have a hearing that usually limits the comments to three minutes. If anybody wants to make a comment, there's blue forms like this over on the table that you'd fill out and turn in, but...so doesn't look like we have anybody here to testify, so we can close the hearing or the oral part of the hearing at this point, and so then what we now decide whether to leave the...what to do next, and it sounds like we're advised to leave the hearing open for written input or testimony to an undetermined time or whatever? Or do we need to say a time?
Yes, so to a date certain, and I'm recommending December 31st.
Okay. So that's been recommended. Any comments, thoughts?
I support that at this time. This is state law that's changed, so this is kind of legislative update, but knowing that rules process is in place and going to be coming down soon, I support leaving the written record open until the end of the year, and then we'll figure out what it looks like.
Commissioner Dare?
I support that also. It seems like two months, we should be able to get the information that we need, so, you know, it seems like an appropriate suggestion for the calendar.
Okay. So do we need a motion along that line, or do we just make that decision?
Typically, you would do that by way of just consensus, but you could certainly make a motion to hold the record open through the end of the year, and the staff will bring it back sometime, likely in January, for a work session and figure out where to go from there. If the rulemaking is substantive, that could necessitate another public hearing. If it's just, you know, ministerial and doesn't really get into much substance, then that wouldn't require another public hearing.
Okay. So why entertain a motion to leave the written record open until December 31st?
Okay. I move we keep the written record open for these two changes to our code until December 31st, 2019. It's for the text amendments for House Bill 2106 and House Bill 3384.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
To be continued. So we're now going to convene as the...next action item is convene as the governing body of the Deschutes County Extension 4H Service District to look at two agreements pertaining to their new building out there. Commissioner DeBonne and I both got to tour of that, as well as Eric was there, I'm not sure who else. Very nice to see that done, and very good, I guess, ceremony, kind of opening it up and celebrating that. We've heard that it came in under budget and ahead of time, which was terrific. So is somebody going to present this to us, or are we just going to discuss this?
I'm going to present it.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Also to let you know, we did invite staff from the OSU Extension. Regional Director Nicole Strong was out of town. Candy Botham, who has been very involved in the project, planned on coming this morning, but she is sick this morning, so she was not able to join us. But as background, the Extension 4H Service District is a service district of Deschutes County. They operate off of a property tax levy of .0218 cents, so just a little bit more than two cents per 1,000 of assessed valuation. And the Board of County Commissioners, as you know, is the governing body of the Service District. What you have before you is a loan agreement with the Service District. Starting about 10 years ago, the Service District started to set aside money each year in a capital fund in order to fund a building expansion. They started putting about $60,000 aside each fiscal year for this fund, and had about a little bit north of $500,000 in that fund. The Service District approached the county and asked if the county would be willing to offer a loan so that the Service District could build a, you know, a building addition. They were increasing their staff. All their staff are actually OSU staff, and they simply ran out of room and needed more space for the community as well. The county looked at several options, including having the Service District get a loan from a private bank, but ultimately, the board agreed to offer the Service District a loan in the amount of up to $1 million with a 20-year payback. The annual interest was agreed upon at 1.85%, and that fits in with how much the Service District has been setting aside each year. So for your consideration this morning is actually two documents, and you'll be considering them both as the governing body of the Service District, and then as the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. The first one is document 2019-654, which is a promissory note that lays out the payback period. And the second document is the loan agreement, which is 2019-767. Finally, I would add that the Service District reviewed both documents. We also had Bruce Bischoff, a private attorney, review them for legal form on behalf of the Service District, and then our county council, Dave Doyle, reviewed both and actually drafted both on behalf of the county. In talking to the board, we all felt that it was important that Bruce review them on behalf of the Service District because of potential conflicts of interest. The Service District reviewed the documents and was in favor. They had one small change. They wanted to make it clear that in the loan agreement that they would be able to...the Service District would be able to lease out the space, so that was incorporated into the loan agreement. So that's the conclusion of the staff presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What's the amount? As in, this is up to $1 million, so construction is done and, yeah, things are stabilized, so, yeah, what does that look like for the final amount?
Yes. The total project had a budget of $1.6 million. The cost to date is $1.4 million. There's still some outstanding costs that are coming in, and those are projected to be about $100,000, which would put the total project cost at about $1.5 million, meaning the million-dollar loan would be a million.
So the final amount, though, is going to be 1.0000, or some other...
It'll be...it'll be right around a million.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, I guess what I...as I read this, it's like, why don't you just say that instead of saying "up to"? I mean, if we're going to do that, it just seems like it's vague as a document.
Yeah. I mean, we drafted these several months ago, and at the time, we were further away from having final documents, our final...the final dollar amount.
See, that...
For the document, though, they're already making a payment tomorrow, the first payment tomorrow, with only two months of interest, so the good news on that payment is $57,000 is going to apply to the principal, so if they do need to borrow some more, you know, they do have some wiggle rooms. They're up to a million.
Yes, yes. And actually, the million dollars was already transferred in the budget from the general fund to the 4H Extension Reserve Fund, and so that has already been...
Basically, is that even number?
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was...
I just was curious why it didn't just say that, the sum of 1 million. You know, this, when this came to us, I think the request was for $2 million, so I'm really happy that they did the value engineering that they did in the building. It's very operable. The people were very happy with their ability to use it, so to...I mean, I don't know what they thought they were going to do if it was going to be 2.5 million with the plan, but, yeah, I wasn't aware that they'd use the 1.4 million. At some point, I hope we'll see that as a cost, so we can see kind of where it varied from the proposal, because we get these proposals on other buildings about what things are going to cost, and it'd be nice to get some background with some of these commercial structures.
Sure. When we get the final cost, then we can provide that to the board with the breakdown of the cost estimates versus the actuals.
Dave, did you have any concerns about it, the way it reads, just "sum up to"? I mean, why not just $1 million and go from there?
Well, certainly at the time, we didn't know what the dollar amount would be, so that when we worked with finance, that's how we put it together. It is secured by the tax pledge and the 20 annual installments with a adjustment on the final one to account for whatever the ultimate dollar amount is that was ultimately borrowed, so...
Well, then, if it was...and so that was another question I had, why didn't...why haven't we already done this, like, months ago? I mean, if we told...we knew we were going to loan the money, couldn't we have done this then, or what's...
We could have. We went back and forth with the Service District. Then we wanted...we talked to the board about outside legal review, so we went through that process. And the budget was already there, it just was more the back and forth of the documents.
So currently, this is our hat as the governing body of the 4H and Extension Service, so, you know, we're going to do both sides of this agreement, you know...
We're going to come out of this and then do it as Deschutes County.
This is just kind of the paperwork exercise, documenting on both sides.
Well, on behalf of the...so I'd seek a motion as the Deschutes County Extension 4H Service District governing body, supporting these two documents.
So, yeah, I'll move chair signature of document number 2019-654, the promissory note for Extension 4H, and chair signature of document number 2019-767, Deschutes County Loan Agreement with Extension and 4H Service District.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion and questions? One question, you mentioned we are secured with a tax situation. We don't have a trust...there's no trustee or anything on this, or...
There is no trustee as the...the way the loan and the agreement was put together, the security is the pledge for the tax receipts, so that the first, whatever the dollar amount it is, is taken out of their tax, their annual tax success levy, and goes directly to service the debt. So the county controls that flow of dollars and receipt of tax revenue, so...
As long as they have a tax base and a tax rate and...
Exactly, unless they somehow dissolved as a taxing district, and then, yeah, then there would be recourse back against the building directly, but there's not a trustee on it, no.
Okay.
I will repeat, the first payment is tomorrow, so that's the good news.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Now, and then, so we'll adjourn as the governing body of Deschutes County Extension 4H Service District, and we'll reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. We're seeking approval as the county board of directors for these same documents. Any questions with our different add-on? Okay. Then I seek a motion supporting this.
I move that we approve documents number 2019-654 and 2019-767 as the governing body of Deschutes County.
And I'll second it.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right. Now, we have on our agenda a lunch recess, but as we talked about Monday, I think we had a couple of matters we were going to try to discuss further. One was the issue of the potential appeal of the Thornburg Destination Resort, which has come up to us, and then we also have an executive session we're going to do, and we may be able to do other items so that we kind of clear our deck for the hearing this afternoon on lower... hearing this afternoon on lower bridges. So I would suggest we do the potential appeal of the Thornburg Destination Resort remand at this time. We talked this through the other day. Some legals gave us a chance to kind of look through the documents some more. So, Jacob Ripper's here from Community Development, so he can, so any new thoughts, or do you want to lay the, lay the, set the table, so to speak, for where we were Monday?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Jacob Ripper, Senior Planner for the Planning Division. This is a continuation from a conversation on Monday about whether to hear an appeal that was filed following a hearings officer's decision following a Luba remand for the first phase of the Thornburg Destination Resort. So, the board on Monday did express an interest, at least a potential interest, in hearing the appeal. So, staff came up with some recommendations, a possible order today as well, and I'll run through those recommendations. Staff's recommendation is to accept a review of the appeal, but hold the review on the record. So that means it includes everything in the record, including video and audio from the hearings officer hearing. It can allow new written arguments from the parties of the remand proceedings, but they can't introduce new evidence. Staff comments and a staff report can be considered, but again, it's directed to the items in the record and any of the matters at hand. And in the order that's prepared, and I'll pass out in just a minute, it does note that the board reserves the right to take judicial notice of any Supreme Court notices that may be issued during these proceedings. And then, due to the, some scheduling constraints, and Thanksgiving is coming up, and we have a November 30 deadline, meeting dates are pretty constrained this month, so I came up with a potential schedule. And I'd like to hand that out now.
You should do that. That's good. So, I don't think we've ever, since I've been here, we haven't heard a matter on the record, because it doesn't sound like we're going to hear anything on the record. We're going to be reading it all. And so, so this is definitely different than a de novo hearing where we would take new evidence. And wasn't the applicant's attorney asking that we hear part of it on the record and part of it de novo? I don't, let's see, I'm trying to remember which one, which way it went, but I remember reading that.
That's correct. Commissioner Henderson, the applicant's attorney requested that the board consider the jurisdictional issue de novo, but the substantive matter on the record. My understanding is that was, that request was predicated on their agreement to extend the clock. And I've spoken with at least the parties that have attorneys that have expressed interest in these proceedings. So Nunzi Gold's attorney, Jeff Kleiman, the applicant's attorney, Liz Fancher, and then Central Oregon Land Watch, had noted that staff's recommendation was going to be to do the entire thing on the record just because of the significant time constraints. And I wouldn't say that they necessarily have consented to that request, but I think they certainly all understand the significant time constraints. And I've at least have a concurrence on the timeframe for when the written arguments would be due, recognizing that there's just not, that there's just not much time in many meetings and already holidays and other things in the next month. And so at least the timeframe for when those written comments are due is shown in that order is something that has been discussed with all of the active, I would describe as active parties.
So how does this actually work then, when we do it on the record? Do we, so that originally, the, there'd been the discussion about de novo review of jurisdictional issues, so then that would mean people would be able to submit new evidence or whatever on the question of jurisdiction, and then, and we're saying we're not doing that, so we will have whatever's in the record about jurisdiction, we'll be reading amongst ourselves and then have a discussion about it? Is that essentially what we do?
Yes. I think it would be perfectly appropriate for a prep work session in the very near future, very similar to what we do prior to an evidentiary hearing, where county staff can lay out the significant issues that occurred in front of the hearing officer. I would encourage the commissioners to watch the hearing in front of the hearing officer, and then to review those record materials. A lot of that...
Wait, don't stop us saying, because we're, I'm trying to figure this out. So I'm looking at this calendar. So does that mean in, for the meeting on the 4th or the 6th, you get, here's all the evidence saying you do have, or here's all the arguments and the cases that say you do have jurisdiction, and here's all the arguments and cases that say you don't have jurisdiction. Now read those. And then, we get new written arguments, so we'll get those on, you have on the 10th, so then we'd have a, or, you know, on the work session on the 12th, it looks like, to discuss those written arguments on the jurisdiction?
No, I think my recommendation would be that we do a work session and the board begin reviewing the record materials prior to the final arguments coming in from the parties.
So that's next week?
I think we, this, of course, is at the board's discretion, but I...
Yeah, no, that's good.
We could do a work session, and I think we can, we could do that work session prior to those. I think it's appropriate under the circumstances, the time constraints, to do a work session, to have the board watch the hearing, to have the board begin reviewing those record materials. And then the very last thing that will come in on the 10th will be those written arguments from the parties. And then soon after, the board would...
So on jurisdiction, there's a lot in the record about, there's arguments, there's cases, there's whatever about whether or not, and the jurisdiction issue is, does Deschutes County as a board have a right to hear this while this, while this has been appealed to the Supreme Court? Isn't that essentially what we're, and we're going to rule on something that the Supreme Court, Court of Appeals will probably rule on, but, and we're just taking a step that the hearings officer didn't want to take, basically, right? If we, if we said we did have jurisdiction, correct?
Yes. So the record that has already been developed has legal arguments and evidence pertaining to both the jurisdictional issues and what I describe as the substantive matters on remand.
Okay. Well, I'm still on jurisdiction, because if we don't have jurisdiction, it doesn't make sense to go to substance, really, does it? I mean, why would we?
That's the board's discretion. You certainly could craft alternative findings in case we're wrong on the jurisdictional piece.
So separate from the jurisdiction, which the Supreme Court, Luba, Court of Appeals may be interested in what we say and may not, the substance is a separate issue about this water and mitigation and those things. We wouldn't get any new evidence on that. We would just, again, pull the things out of the record pertaining to that, and then we'd make a ruling on that or a decision on that that would then be appealable if people wanted to appeal it to Luba or whatever. So we would be taking the step, again, that the hearings officer did not take, essentially, okay?
Which is the board's option. So I would say...
And would we do both of those next week, then? Would we try to, and I'm kind of imagining you're, you're coming up with a packet over here and a packet over here on jurisdiction, a packet over here and a packet over here of, on the water stuff, so we can understand it, and then we'll be talking through it? Is that...
We can certainly organize it that way.
That's my, I'm just trying to sort it out in my head. Go ahead.
And do we need a packet, in that terminology, do we need a packet on jurisdiction, or are we just making a decision about jurisdiction? So one of the things in the appeal information, page four at the bottom, it says, "We're a writ of mandamus filed for this application after 120 days has elapsed. The only remedy provided by law is for the current circuit court to direct the board to make the land use decision anyway." So when I saw that, I'm like, oh, that kind of makes, that's the logic that I would see also. You know, the cure is to make the decision, no matter which way we go here. So...
Parties disagree on that interpretation.
Okay. Well, I bought into that, I guess, is one, yeah, and if we have the authority to or not. But, so, but that brings back the concept. Do we need to have a discussion and a record on this, or are we just making the decision and getting to the merits of the case?
Well, I think, I think both. There already is a record on the jurisdictional piece, and it's a fairly robust record on the jurisdictional piece. And to the extent that the parties want to add any additional argument on the jurisdictional piece, they'll have an opportunity to do so. The only thing that the parties would be prohibited from doing is introducing new evidence on the jurisdictional piece, but it's a legal argument.
So is, but, so this issue of, does a appeal to the Supreme Court essentially stay the county's right to resolve something? I mean, it's not really fact-based, it's kind of legal-based. It's a, it's a legal. Now, would new cases be new evidence, or would that be, because I would assume they would be looking for cases that bolster their position, and so is that allowed as part of the on-the-record decision?
I believe citing to case law would be part of their legal argument. However, I'm not necessarily worried. Both parties, I think, have represented that this is a matter of first impression, and they've, both have chosen their cases and argued different case law in front of the hearing officer. So I'm not anticipating...
They're lawyers, so they have to come up with some more stuff if they're going to, they're not going to just rehash the same stuff, so, okay.
And if I may, Commissioner, I would actually, I would describe that there's likely three separate, but very much interrelated questions for the board to answer. The first is the jurisdictional piece. The second, depending on how you decide the jurisdictional matter, do you want to reach the substantive issues? The hearing officer said, "We don't, I don't have jurisdiction. It's not appropriate for me to go further." That, I think, is a debatable question for the board also to wrestle with. And then the third, depending on how you answer the first two questions, would be the substantive matter. So I think there's really three very much interrelated questions to consider.
I'll get the difference between one and two.
I think if you, if the board agrees with the hearing officer that you do not have jurisdiction, one option is to stop your review right then and there, which is what the hearing officer did. I think separate consideration is if you decide you don't have jurisdiction. You very well may note that that's a temporal issue, and you will likely have jurisdiction at some point in time in the future, and thereby, you're going to issue alternative findings in case you're on...
Like we do in other cases where we say, we may not have jurisdiction, but if the court, some, some higher court finds we do, here's how we decided the water thing.
Exactly. The hearing officer did not want to, did not want to go that route, but I do think that that is a position for the board to certainly consider.
Yeah. Commissioner Dare, just questions, thoughts?
How many binders do we have on this?
Three.
Yes, that's what I thought. What, is it 3,000 pages?
Yeah.
I know. It's, it's a complicated issue. You hear about it from the neighborhood, and, you know...
Well, maybe more on this issue. Three is on the one we're doing this afternoon. Maybe it's more on the Thornburg. We, this particular issue, I don't know how much is about water.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of materials on the record, but the remand subject is extremely narrowed.
It's narrowed. Okay.
Okay, so that one's easier.
All right. So, you know, I, it is interesting because the Supreme Court is hanging over, right? And what are they doing? And are they going to do anything within the next 20 days? So, you know?
Well, probably not.
Probably not. They have moved to their new building, though. They're in their warehouse now.
Are they?
Yes.
That's where, that's their temporary building?
For two years. They're in their temporary building. So it would be interesting.
The applicant's recommendation, we included the language in the order that, of course, the board can take judicial notice if the Supreme Court decides to hear the matter or not. That, of course, if the Supreme Court decides not to hear the matter, then there is no longer jurisdictional issue. I don't expect that we will hear from the Supreme Court in the next month. I think it'll take longer than that for them to decide if they're going to hear the matter or not. Maybe we'll hear sooner, but usually it takes a little bit more.
The thing I think is hard, it'll be hard, I know for me, I like to get my information through testimony and then augment that with the record documents, rather than probably the other way around, because the testimony goes at a different pace, and it's, you can ask questions if you're not clear what they're saying, whereas the, it's like we'll need somebody, a reader right next to us, "Well, what does this mean?" So you may be asked to do some of that, but...
So what you're proposing now is that you actually want us to watch the hearing officer presentations like this weekend, so we can be ready on Monday? Is that, is that how it looks, if we do?
Well, I don't know. Is that, is that a possibility, to watch the hearings officer hearing? I was thinking we were going to read all the stuff he, he had to read, but what, yeah, that's a good question.
Yes. You're certainly, I think the recording of the hearing officer's decision is part of the record, and the board can watch that hearing. I would encourage the board to do so. Slight sidebar and a related note, did we mention the transcript piece yet?
Not yet, no.
Sorry, I'll just, so the applicant has requested, as our code contemplates and is our usual practice, to waive the transcript requirement. The opponents have objected to waiving the transcript requirement. It's, I would say it's very standard practice for Deschutes County to waive the transcript because we have frequently video recording and a minimum audio recording of all previous hearings that the board and any party can go and review.
Well, how long's the trans, or how long was the hearing itself?
It was probably about three hours.
But I would assume, and it was all of that on the water issue?
Water issue, jurisdictional issues, and then unrelated issues were discussed.
Well, it's, I don't know, for me, and, I mean, I'm as inclined to watch it as read it, I suppose. I don't know what's your thought?
Well, so stepping back a half a step here, the order that we're talking about does commit to this 30-day window in November. So I, that's what we're talking about, is the commitment to that. So if we get to this order today, then, then we're committing to watching it and digesting the record. So I'm just making sure we're on the same page. But yeah, knowing it's a, kind of the narrow issue, there's plenty of information and history on this, and, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we, you know, we'll take it in. If we can meet a few times, just like we're being proposed here, this would be very valuable. I don't know if staff's available to sit down and answer questions or point us to whatever information we need. So I think it's possible.
It's definitely doable, and the fact that you have the 18th down, that's, that's, you know, perfect planning for that week. So...
Yeah, so that Monday before going to an out-of-town conference.
So, so I'm supportive of going forward. I, I, it's possible that the appellant, I guess, would, would win at the Supreme Court, and they would want to take this up, and kind of what we're doing would go for naught. But I, if I was, I think it's more possible that the Supreme Court won't want to take it up. So I think it may be very valuable to move forward now so that we move towards resolution of these issues. So that's kind of my feel, but I could be wrong, but I'm just, it seems that way.
I agree with, I think we should take it up.
Okay. Okay. So, and on the record as opposed to de novo, and were you saying the applicant had withdrawn wanting to do it de novo, or they're just...
No, but I think they understand the timing concerns based on my conversations with the applicant's attorney.
The de novo would make it more difficult to do in this, in the short timeline?
I would say bordering on impossible. Once we provide notice of the hearing, I mean, providing notice of the hearing itself would take a good chunk of the month that we have to do this.
And I think the only other major land use is the lower bridges that's, we have some timelines. I don't know if that's, how time-constricted that is, if we need to keep that open into December. I don't know what the, you? I don't know what the, you? In terms of having enough time to, because of AOC Week and Thanksgiving Week, this would be a priority for us.
I would think, I would agree that this will likely need to be the priority. I don't know off the top of my head the timeframe for the lower bridge matter, although I'm anticipating that the board will leave the record open. And that record period, that period of time where the record will be open for lower bridge will probably overlap at the time that you're considering this matter.
All right. Do we need a motion, or do we just, is that?
Yeah, motion to approve order 2019043.
Let's see. Okay, I don't actually have it here.
It's on the other-
Oh, it's under this, okay. Okay, entertain a motion for, to approve this order?
I'll make a motion that we approve order number, accepting the review of the hearing officer's decision in application number 247-19-000611-A, order number 2019-43.
And I'll second it.
Any further comments? Commissioner Derr?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thanks.
If I may, on just scheduling going forward, Jacob and I just talked. We would propose that staff do a two-part prep work session. The first part on November 6, Wednesday, November 6, on the jurisdictional piece, and then the following Tuesday, November 12, on the substantive issues. And so we could kind of break it up in that, in that way, and kind of do it in two bite-sized pieces, so to speak. Does that work for the board?
Giving up that Monday meeting, that 4th, where we?
We have a meeting on next Monday. Did you want to work on it on Monday?
I can, I can try. I've gotta get the agenda request in today by 5:00.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I can, I can-
The reason I would think is that if the written arguments are due on the 10th, they probably want us, I would think, the attorneys might want to see where we're headed, or what we've, what I, I mean, so I'd want to see is what, what have we said so far, and what are our... So if we don't discuss the substantive till after their written arguments, they're kind of, I don't know, that's just my thought on it, but.
Well, and these will just be prep work sessions where the board are maybe asking questions, but, I mean, of course, we want to steer clear from deliberations in those kind of work session settings.
Well, I mean, yeah, and yeah, but, I mean, but we're discussing what we're thinking about. That's, because that's why we have the work sessions. So I would think an attorney watching us would be thinking about where are we going, and what are our questions, and what, and that's what you do as attorney. What about changing the written arguments due to Wednesday? I don't know. Of course, that doesn't give much time either.
We had originally suggested Wednesday, the 6th deadline for written arguments, and the parties requested an extension.
Well, I think they want the right ability to do the best they can, so... I feel like written arguments ought to be after we've had an initial discussion of the issues, because a lot of our clarity will be, I mean, we're not discussing where we're going, but we're discussing-
You're referring to, instead of just jurisdiction?
Both of them be handled in that next week. I don't know if we can do them both in the same meeting, but.
We could do both on the same meeting on the 6th.
Could we?
Okay.
That would probably, I think it'd be better.
I think that'd be fair to the attorneys and...
Yeah, then the deadline's tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else on this matter? All right. So, I believe our next item is an executive session. I think we might as well go up, do that upstairs. The what? Oh, the Habitat. There's a whole number of other items we could talk about. So, yeah, we could talk about a couple of things. Yeah. Okay. Good. So, thank you for presenting this, helping us understand it.
Other business and then e-session, or e-session first?
We're gonna do other business for a minute here and talk about a few things. So, yeah, there's a couple of things we can talk about generally, so. So, Peter, do you want to join us and talk about the Habitat Conservation Plan? I'm sorry, I missed the end of the discussion the other day. I understood that support had come out for a letter endorsing the plan itself from the other commissioners, so I guess that's where it was left, or?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning Manager. Yeah, I think the conversation continued for approximately 10 to 15 minutes to, I think the direction that staff heard was there was interest in drafting a, a letter offering comments on the, on the draft Deschutes Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. I have prepared a draft letter. I'm in a position to upload it if so directed for Monday. Tom and I received an email from Bridget Moran with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and I forwarded it to you yesterday. The public comment period's been extended for 15 days, so it closes on December 3rd. So certainly to the extent that this commission is interested in expert feedback, that's a possibility. Of course, your November meetings are starting to stack up, but I did, in the anticipation that that might be something that the board's contemplating. I left a message with Craig Roel, have not heard back from him. Did speak to Bridget Moran, who's the field supervisor for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. She's available, as I recall, November 6 or November 13, if you wanted to hear their role. So it's really, I'm here at, you know, at the pleasure of the board, whatever I can do to coordinate. If you're interested in hearing from representatives from the Deschutes Basin Border Control or U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, I'm certainly willing to try to corral those people at a meeting that you're comfortable with.
And we can see Craig on the 7th at the morning, the Blackberry, the diner. He'll be there if we wanted to talk to him with that.
The letter of support was talking about, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but Option A or whatever it was, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, CFS?
Yeah, what I have drafted, again, and of course, this is totally subject to change, is offering two comments, just to kind of get the wheels spinning. One is offering perspectives on the preferred alternative as introduced by the Deschutes Basin Border Control.
Which is that?
Yeah, it's Alternative 2, which is solely focused on conservation measures that would put water in-stream, more on the back end of the 30-year lifespan of the Habitat Conservation Plan. Also, again, for the board's consideration, made note that, based on, I acknowledge that we're the board, and your staff are not experts in understanding or knowing what the physical habitat needs are for these covered species, but based on community input, that I drew a distinction between Alternative and Alternative 3. The participating in the cooperating agency meetings, I think the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is trying to encourage the applicants to consider Alternative 3 for reasons, for a couple of reasons. One is it would create a restoration fund. That's not an Alternative 2. It's approximately $100,000 a year. That fund would be made available as the irrigation districts in the city of Pryonville work towards their conservation measures. It also puts a bit more water in-stream earlier. I realize that that's, I'm just, I just drafted that for your consideration, and the, the, maybe the poignancy of that comment potentially is that it could head off litigation. As I think this board's aware, there are, there are parties that may litigate over the adequacy of just Alternative 2. So that second comment was, I structured it to the extent that that could head off expensive litigation. It may be worth consideration.
What you're explaining to me today is what I would like, I would like to hear from Craig Roel and Bridget Moran, and there's probably a couple of other people from... I mean, they were very active in the Basin Study Work Group when I was on it, and they, I've heard about these ideas as they go along, but I'd be really interested to hear why they like something, why they don't like something, what it costs, what the, you know. Yeah, as the experts, and then we form opinion collectively or separately, depending on how we all come out, as to where we are in it. And because we've been given the, I think it was on the news even last night that it extended to the 3rd, that gives us a couple of extra weeks to put something together. So I, yeah, I'm, I'd really be interested in working on kind of a little, a panel maybe, kind of like we did with marijuana, where we, they come in and they say their piece. It's interesting, you know, we had that presentation on Pelton Dam, and remember, Megan was talking about more nutrients coming down the river from the Crooked River and the warming causing algae booms. So this week in the bulletin, there's an editorial, and they call it pollution. So, you know, it's just this thing where nutrients, you know, become pollution in the river, as opposed to, you know, it's just, and so I see this as getting worse. And then I know that Todd Heisler wrote an article about it as well, saying that, and he might be something we want to, somebody we want to hear from, why he thinks what he thinks, because it's, it's complicated, and I think, but I think it's good that we comment on it for what matters to us, or what we think matters to people, because we don't really represent the river, we represent the people that live here. So, are you good with the panel?
Well, yes. And the other day, I don't, I also want to make it for the record that we were talking about the North Unit, because they are the lowest on the priority, and agriculture is, it's Jefferson County, but it's a significant, isn't it like 14% or something of their economy? They are significantly impacted by those two, what, 3 and 4? Their water will be shut off, and their land will be turned into dirt. So, you know, I think that's an issue.
And that's an issue of, well, how far out should one county look out for another county? That's an, I mean, I've, I built houses for a couple of those farmers up there, and so I know them, and they're pretty, yeah, they're, it's serious agriculture there.
It is, it's serious.
But then there's also things about the use of the river, is you've got the river going through it, but then there's the people that used to like using the lakes, the reservoirs, which are now down to the point where they're not very usable, so what's the balancing act? I think there's a variety of things to talk about, and so we could maybe come up with a panel. I like the idea of the 13th, that gives us a couple of weeks to do it. Bridget will be interesting, and Craig could be interesting.
Do you want, I could reach out to Bridget, Craig Roel, if you're interested, Todd Heisler, the North Unit.
What about Mike Britton from the-
Mike Britton, I was, yeah, I was giving the North Unit-
He was the president.
General manager. That would be four, and so, with your direction, I can, I can try to schedule that or keep you abreast of their availability.
The other thing that's not being talked about, and I've, I've talked about it some, but not as much as I probably feel about it, is that, you know, we've built this man-made river system that's bigger than just the one that geologically got developed down in Deschutes. We developed it, and so we end up with all this habitat and places where animals can live, because there's water sources, and we're taking all that away, we're going back to a desert. And I, you know, some of these other irrigation districts that have charged ahead and done all that, you know, they've got to be having impacts on, you know, and I'd be interested in hearing what they're seeing. I don't know, I mean, there's just this assumption that we'll pipe it all and get it all back in the Deschutes River, that one place, and then that's where the water will be, and it's like...
Yeah, my, my understanding is the conserved water will, that's the savings. That's, that's where water will be transferred. So if it's successful, as conceptualized, the on-farm efficiency measures, the, the piping happens diligently, that, that water that's lost to transmission is then allocated to North Unit and in ways that helps them remain solvent. Of course, you have climatic variations over a 30-year window, so the environmental impact statements talks about, or analyzes the potential economic impact on dry years or wet years in relationship to that conservation set of timelines.
And they talked a lot about that at the Basin Study Work Group, that the first step would be trying to get farmers to use less water on their land, to close up their ditches, and going back, and then going to the system, the irrigation companies' ditches, which are, you know, and that was a big topic of how you actually do the conservation, if you do this many, I mean, maybe even a presentation of what those results were from that, because it, they were not really prescriptive about what should happen, but they were analyzing how much, how much water you get in the river if you do this, how much do you get this, and then the leasing of water rights, which has been talked about. So I, I can't remember who read, maybe it was, who ran that? It was a Bureau of Reclamation, but that was a pretty worthwhile information, too. But, okay, well, that's good. Got some direction, we can work with you and talk to you.
I'll reach out to four individuals, Bridget Moran, Craig Roel, Mike Britton, Britton, and Todd Heisler, and then I'll, in light of this-
Well, but what about, I mean, another big advocacy group is the fishermen. I mean, the people that really want more water in the river are fishermen, because, I mean, that, they talk about it all the time. I mean, they're very involved. I mean, I don't know if they're, what weight they should be given, but they're, they were at the table. There's, you know, I don't know how many people we want, but I, I think we can talk about it further.
They always have the breakfast at the Blackberry.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They're always there.
Okay. I can reach out and figure out who that might be, or which organization, and I think you've given me enough in terms of the types of topics you're interested in hearing from. Piping, water conservation, the timing and location of those conservation measures, water leasing, things of that sort. So we'll shoot for November 13th. And I will certainly hold off on that letter, since it may certainly change.
Now, the EIS itself and the plan itself, what'd you say, 400 pages and 600 pages?
I think the Habitat Conservation Plan is 800 pages, and the environmental impact statement is several hundred pages.
So 1,500 pages. So is there some way to, you know, we got those handouts that they'd handed out at the public meetings. Is there summaries of those that we could read, or what?
What, good question.
Do you have a copy in your office?
What, I, I have sent you summaries of the land use elements in the environmental impact statement electronically. I can certainly, I didn't bring my stack, but I can certainly make copies of those, those chapters that I thought were most relevant to, to call it my area of expertise, if that's, if you're interested in that.
But do you have a published set of the whole thing? I mean, I-
I did not print out, I did not print out a published, only because we were inside the tent and we had an opportunity to review those, in my case, those relevant land use chapters. So, but I can certainly go in and-
We're beyond, I mean, our role's more than land use, so, I mean, we're-
Correct. I was, just in terms of what I could offer, feedback, but you're right. I mean, there's, there is the whole Habitat Conservation Plan, which I've attempted to summarize, that, you know, explains their, their motivation, their approach, the amount of water that they would put in, in the upper Deschutes Basin system. But I'm happy to, if you would, there's certainly, I can, I can forward you the link to the website, and if you want to provide direction of what you might want, I could do that. Or I could, I could give you the whole enchilada, knowing that you're gonna be reading a lot of materials this, this next month.
I personally don't want that yet. I'll, I'll figure out some way to look at it. What do you guys want?
Go ahead and send a link to kind of the website itself, because, you know, that'll be the starting point for us.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
I like it about as much as the dentist.
There you go.
Links, and then we gotta publish it. Okay, thanks. All right, so, a couple of other things we could maybe discuss real quickly before we get to executive. Christian DeBonne and I went to the Homeless Coalition meeting yesterday. It was kind of interesting, a lot of people, and Eric went also. And I didn't know, was our, was our designated?
Colleen was there.
Was Colleen there? I-
Yeah, Colleen, she was co-leading the meeting, along with James Cook.
Okay. And so, yeah, I can't- Okay. And so, yeah, I can't, um, so they were asking for other spaces. And so one that occurred to me was is our juvenile department building. Do we, don't we have two pods that aren't in use at all? And would that be a possi, I didn't want to bring it up with the whole group because it may sound insensitive to think about putting homeless people in that kind of a shelter, but aren't those empty? They have no, they need about 70 beds worth of area. And they really don't have it. And we got a report today that one of them, that they thought was going to be doable over on Third Street probably isn't going to be, it looks like, so.
Yeah, I believe those are leased at J-Bar-J, the two that we aren't using.
I thought we used one and J-Bar-J got one or two, and then there's a, isn't there one that's just empty?
I don't believe so. We can follow up. I, I know that we use two, uh, one for primary and then one for, um, kind of spillover and secondary. If there's separation, and I thought we had leased the second pod, uh, J-Bar-J, so they have control over two. I can double check that, that's my recollection.
And then the other that occurred to me was the, if the work center's not completely full, which it isn't, I don't think, uh, you know, is that a possibility? And they were just really looking for anywhere they could put, you know, beds and open rooms and they had a lot of criteria. They didn't really, the other thing is we, they didn't really have a, um, somebody that's actually going to run these facilities, which was kind of interesting that, because that would be a factor that, um.
And the Parks Department, that idea, that, that didn't fly?
It came up and, but it didn't fly, I guess, because of the fact that it's full of stuff and liability issues and.
Are you talking about the one out?
The one.
The fire station.
Yeah, on Hanby or.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't, they didn't offer that as one of the ones that would work. They, they talked about some on Third, some buildings on Third Street and on Greenwood. They were, they really didn't have, I mean, the one that was the, they had the most thought about, uh, is right next to, it's where Drew's boots were, right next to the 711 across from, um, Safeway. But we, there was a memo today that the owner may not want to do that for a variety of reasons and, and so there's, so I, so anyway, that's, that's where it is and.
The fire station out and it's county land and it's zone EFU, and we worked on that a couple of weeks ago. It was, it is full of storage and storage surely can go to a storage unit, but I didn't think legally we could have it there. Isn't that what you came up with, Dave?
Yeah, there were zoning issues. Uh, you have to, in EFU, a facility like that, apart from the fire code issues and the sanitation issues and a few other, environmental health type issues, it has to serve the local community. And so if you're in essence importing folks from the urban, from the city, that's not serving that rural area. And so the zoning doesn't allow that as a temporary shelter. So there were a number of issues, whether they could be overcome or not, I don't know, but those were the, the initial issues.
Now, the city, they, they offered the idea that some of those might be able to be overcome for a temporary housing permit, or what really works well if it's an ancillary use. So a church works really well because the, the warming shelter or place where people can sleep is, becomes an ancillary use for the church. That's easier to allow than go renting a warehouse and a non, you know, and getting a temporary housing. But I don't know, you're saying it's, but that would be under county, uh, control, the, the fire station out on.
County land use, it's in EFU zone, out of the city limits. And the city zoning is going to be a little more, um, easier to work with on some of those issues just because it's city zoning and city zoning is different. That's part of the Oregon land use system. You know, I, again, I'm not saying there isn't a, a path forward, but those are the issues initially that would have to be addressed.
Were there churches there yesterday?
There was several. Uh, the Presbyterian Church is working towards doing some use of their facility. That's the one over by Bend High.
Bend High, yes.
Yeah. But he didn't really know, um, you know, how many people he might be able to take in. And I know a couple of the other churches. Some of the, the churches already are taking some of the, uh, are providing, um, space for some, uh, people, but it's like 30 people are provided for in Bend. They're thinking they need a room for 100.
Colleen was saying, yeah, on the news when she was interviewed, it was 100 people. But have you talked to Terry Callen? You know, I was thinking I should give him a call. He's always pretty, um.
Yeah, I don't know. He's with the Nazarene Church. Yeah, he might know something.
Okay, I, I meant to call Terry and see if he had any.
He wasn't there, but yeah, he would be interested.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
There are other places that are still going to be checked into, um.
It was 1 degrees this morning on the way to town.
Churches tend to be a common area because typically they've already got some of the environmental health issues. They usually have bathrooms, sanitation facilities for larger groups. And so that's one of the benefits that they have and they're typically in, in the city. So that also the zoning's a lot, the restrictions are much more, uh, easier to work around and, and create carve-outs. The county zoning is very strict, especially in resource zones. And that's, I mean, you've been, we, we, we work at here all the time, but.
You know, people might be interested in a waiver because of the temporary use. I mean, it's all, they talked about the Red Cross and something has to, you know, with them setting up facilities, they have to be called a disaster.
Right.
I don't know when freezing weather becomes that, but that was the issue.
Your primary residence isn't available because of disaster.
Yeah. That was their definition, yeah.
It's going to be a disaster if some, if a couple of people die from the cold. And then we're going to all wonder why we, why this hasn't been achieved. I mean.
It got a lot of attention yesterday. The room was full. People are serious about this issue.
Yeah.
You know, one of the points is, uh, an ideal location, or ideally there'd be two locations or more, uh, kind of divide this, uh, population, uh, into smaller groups. Uh, kind of that gymnasium or open style with bathroom and kitchen facilities, uh, is, would be the vision, you know, so it was. But, I mean, we're in a spot where the economy's doing well. Construction isn't even keeping up. And this is kind of a natural place to be for an area like ours.
And the other, and apparently the problem with the space they used the last two years was so much complaints by neighbors about behavior outside the facility. And that's where they talked a lot about, well, if you do a facility, you've got to kind of get buy-in from neighborhoods. Or it's kind of a disaster too. And they talked that, the police department was there talking about what services they can provide. But apparently last year they were asked not to come to the, the, the facility that. So, yeah, I was, I was surprised, just as an observation, I was surprised that it's this late in the year and that somebody hasn't thought of this. I almost feel like there should be a nonprofit dedicated to winter housing that, that all they do is get ready for this because it's a different need in winter than it is during the rest of the year. And it could be a much more targeted thing and you could have it lined up by July or August. I was given one suggestive place to look into, which I haven't done. But then I was just, I was just thinking of our county buildings and whether there was any spaces because uh, we certainly work with a lot of the people with our, um, health department. So, anyway. The other one I thought about was the fairgrounds with regard to all those buildings where we put animals. I don't know if they're all full all winter or not.
They have all the RV parked, the trailers and everything are parked there.
In every building?
Yes, they pretty much maximized it. Um, Dan, or Dan had set it up when I was visiting this spring. It's, it was all full. You know, people bring their RVs, they leave them there, their boats, all those things go into the fairgrounds. So, and then there, there, you know, there are events there every weekend.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they're in all the buildings. They're in, um, one possibly two, but I, I think it's also, isn't it Bend that we're.
Bend desert, mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I mean, if there isn't a shelter, you could theoretically move people. I mean, if, if it's an emergency, I mean, I, I'm just thinking, what can we do? I mean.
What can we do?
Anyway, so that was kind of, did you have any other observations? I think, I think there was agreement about trying to have two or three smaller spaces rather than one large one. One of the things we learned is you, you want a gymnasium type structure, but you can't have too many doors or that's hard to monitor. And, but you can't close off the doors because you have fire violations, fire code violations. So it's like, so you almost need the perfect spot somewhere.
Yeah, so there was a, a lot of folks in the room, uh, very, very much, uh, passionate about the subject, obviously. There's a vision about how it could flow. It is just finding that floor space in, in Bend right now, cause they mentioned that, uh, Redmond Sisters and Lapine do have emergency overnight shelters. There's a system in place. There's a network in all of central Oregon. One of the things is in fact, for anybody that has a building here in, in Bend, there's a infrastructure and a network of support. So it isn't just open the doors, hope for the best. There, there's requirements of staff and volunteers. There's public safety coordination and land use. So we've got a system that will support this, uh, you know, for those emergency situations. It's not as scary as you'd think for the property owners. So we do need to get over that hump, find the location.
Well, that's kind of an update. I, I think we want to work on it further. If you have other ideas.
Okay, I'll call Terry and see if he can.
He has any ideas and, and I think there was assumption that we would be involved, but there wasn't really an ask from, for anybody. It was more like, look, you know, look for spaces and, and there was some discussion. One that I mentioned to somebody next to me and then they said it was the, this, where the Les Schwab has gotten approval to possibly build their new facilities on Third Street. Well, there's several empty buildings right now because they've cleared them all out. So, but that hasn't been approved yet, but.
And the other important piece that was brought up yesterday is, is the state funding. There apparently is $150,000 available from the state for central Oregon shelters.
And that was the conclusion, that resources are available, grants and dollars are available. It is truly just finding that location at this point in time.
Yeah.
I really think a couple of locations would be better.
Oh yeah.
I mean, ideal in Bend. So.
Well, that's, that was kind of the consensus there, I think, because they're actually easier to operate and everything, so.
I used to work, um, our help at the Union Rescue Mission and, um, it was a huge facility in downtown LA. And I just know that, um, and then they did something smaller for women and children, which made a lot of sense. So.
Well, and Shepherd's House is a model of a mission. It's, uh, they're partners with missions around the country, kind of the mission support network. Uh, but they, there's no way for them to grow and be more of that low barrier, uh, emergency shelter from their mission they currently have. And it boils down to the facility again. So, you know, a gymnasium type building with a little bit of infrastructure would, or two of them, would be the vision.
Yeah, aren't there any schools that have had to close?
Well, in the win, that, that was discussed. We have.
I mean, there aren't.
Expanding schools and expanding sports programs. And in the winter is when, uh, you know, it starts early and goes late for all sports, basically.
Right.
I think we need to, um, do our executive session, so we'll move upstairs to that. Uh, I did want to mention, I was by Courtney, or well, we were at Courtney yesterday. And, uh, I guess the heating units are, they got the ladder built to the roof and I don't know if they're putting stuff in or not, but, so.
Did you go up on the roof and look?
No, I didn't. I was thinking about going back and, I might, I may, because it interests me to see what they're actually doing, but I wanted to let you know they, I didn't see that, so. Okay, uh, we'll, um, sure, well, we're going to reconvene upstairs. So we're going to recess here, reconvene upstairs for.
Be back here for a one o'clock.
And we'll be back here for a one o'clock hearing. Thank you. Well, welcome everyone. I'm going to call to order the, um, well, we're re, we're reconvening in a board of commissioners. We started our meeting this morning at 10:00 and got through a lot of things and took a break. And so we're now ready to have a public hearing on Lower Bridge Planned Unit Development Appeal. So thank you for coming today. Um, let's see. This is the time and place for the hearing of a appeal of hearings officer decision. and then 741-DH and 757-DH. Staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be followed. Uh, if you're planning to speak on this today as a witness, there's, uh, blue forms up here that you can, um, fill out and give to Sharon over here and they'll make it up to our, um, to me and we'll, we call people in that or kind of in the order that they put in at. So, thank you. So go ahead.
Good afternoon. For the record, Will Groves, Deschutes County Planning. The hearings body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a 19 lot planned unit development. The property is located generally east of Lower Bridgeway adjacent to the Deschutes River. The applicant, Lower Bridge LLC, is requesting approval of a planned unit development. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearings body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing and deliberations to a time and date certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief report. The applicant will present its testimony and evidence. The appellant will present their testimony and evidence. We'll have a moment for, uh, neutral parties. So these are typically other agencies who are here attending today. Uh, opponents and then pro, sorry, proponents, then opponents will present their testimony and evidence, uh, in the order of, of the sign up there. And then any, any other interested persons are certainly welcome to testify. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. If requested by the hearings body, staff will provide closing comments. A full written version of the hearing procedure, procedures is available at the table on the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearings, observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
So a site tour recently, we've had work sessions on this, but there's no, uh, conflict that, that I would have.
Yes, we did have a site tour Friday afternoon and I do drive by that area rather consistently.
So the site tours were done individually. We each, um, were taking the same kind of route to see the property specific to this, kind of the view from the other side of the river and then a view from up on High. So that was for the purpose of informing us on what was really the, the lay of the land, so to speak. Um, I also know a couple of the people I believe are going to be testing, testifying today. Um, and, um, but have, I don't think I have anything that's, provides a conflict, so. So let's see, oh, does any commissioner have anything to disclose? Oh, I haven't said that right. Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner member of the hearings body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Okay, so we'll open the hearing and, um, ask staff to proceed with a brief staff report.
Thank you, commissioners. At the outset, I want to discuss the hearing procedure as determined by the board at the work session. Both the applicant and appellant will receive 30 minutes for their initial presentation. Uh, the applicant also will testify last and have an additional 10 minutes available for rebuttal. All other parties will receive five minutes for testimony. We'll have a clock running there. I wanted to give a little bit of context on the site visit. Uh, I took the commissioners on serial site visits, so we, we each went individually. We met at Bordenbeck Park. And then in various order, uh, went to the Beard property across the river to take a look at the site as well as to the, uh, the overlook on Teeter Road. And also took a tour of the subject property, driving around out to the end of the peninsula there. At this time, is there any additional impressions or, uh, anything that would be persuasive in their decision-making that you want to describe? Commissioners as part of that, as part of that visit or satisfied with your impressions?
So I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking. Do you want us to have some, we probably have a lot to say about what we saw, but I don't know if you were.
Uh, so there's an opportunity. We do want to get in the record if you have impressions that you're going to use to make your decision. Uh, typically commissioners, um, in prior hearings would have said something like, you know, we drove from location to location. At this location in particular, I noticed this. Um, if there was nothing that was sort of unexpected or not a, not out of line of what you saw in the record materials, then, you know, you could confirm that your, uh, your understanding from the record was, was supplemented and confirmed.
Shadere, anything you'd like to comment on?
Because I do drive that road a lot. Um, and then I drove by on Saturday and on Sunday and, um, I, it was, you know, it's very clear, you know, the historical sign on the rocks, um, the view is spectacular at, at the area and actually just stopping at the park and getting out and walking around. It's, you know, it's a beautiful part of northern Deschutes County. So that's mainly what I would say.
So, uh, simple observations. It was a reminder that it is six miles in from kind of the 97. So, simple observations, there's a reminder that it is six miles in from kind of the 97 Lower Bridge interchange. It's just point of reference, you know, just the distance coming back into that property, from the Beard residence looking up, seeing the water, seeing the elevation change, and then also from that teeter overlook, looking down. So just the perspective of elevation change is an observation that I was able to pick up. So it was good to be able to spend time seeing that recently.
I think for me, the, like the other commissioners said, I think just how beautiful the river is there and the habitat, that was one that did stick out to me. I was surprised that the property that wants to be developed was kind of as rough-looking as it was. I refer to it to remind me of going to Sumter, where they mined Sumter and left piles of rocks. And so it's not really a very attractive now, that's something that... So fixing it up is something that I like the idea of, is the same with the other. I realized, have an idea of how big that whole 600 acres parcel was and how kind of rough it looked, I guess, that was my thing. The other thing, I was surprised that there wasn't really any rimrock that I could see that really caused a dividing line. We've, I've been involved in building houses on occasion along the river that, where the rimrock really is a dividing between, you go over it and you're down. There's, I was surprised at that slope issue. I guess those things. And obviously, yeah, that's about, those are my observations.
Thank you, commissioners. So I think everyone's real familiar with this property. I'm going to give a relatively abbreviated staff report just for orientation. The subject property, again, is located adjacent to the Deschutes River, and we're talking about property predominantly east of Lower Bridgeway. The present application is a planned unit development. The entire property is 144 acres. The applicant has proposed 19, 2, 5 acre lots with 94 acres of restricted open space and access from Lower Bridgeway. There has been, since the last update, there has been some new testimony. So in your binders today, commissioners, there are those materials shown and as dated on the screen there. In addition, I just handed out two additional materials, a submittal from Oregon Parks and Rec and the Calfa Holdings LLC submittal, which I received prior to the hearing. Those will be digested to you, as it were, as part of your deliberation packet. So there's some key issues to discuss today, I'm going to go over these very briefly. If a planned unit development application can include floodplain zone land, and if that land can be counted towards the housing and density bonuses. A question of if transferring density from floodplain zone land to residential lands acts as a plan amendment. A question of if sufficient financing exists to assure that the proposed development will be completed within four years. Are the proposed lots developable given the applicable constraints? Has the floodplain zone land received an exception from the Goal III resource acreage standards? Has the environmental history of the mine been adequately addressed and resolved? Will the sensitive habitats associated with the Deschutes River and nearby rimrock be adequately protected? As well as, one of the basis of denial for the hearings officer is the surface mining impact zone findings. So I expect testimony on that today. The board will have some options at the close of this hearing. They can continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. They can close the oral record and keep the written record open to a date and time certain and establish post-hearing record periods. Or they can close the public hearing oral and written and even begin deliberations. So that concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Bone, any questions? Mr. Dare?
Yeah.
I don't have any questions at this time either, so...
All right, thank you.
So again, the timelines will be that the applicant will appear first, will have 30 minutes. The appellant will have 30 minutes, other witnesses will have five minutes, I believe. Is that correct, Will?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's what he said.
So... So if you're testifying today, make sure you identify yourself for the record, so we know that.
These aren't super visible, so I'm going to let you see them and then I'll stick them over there. This was, this is a vicinity map that kind of puts the perspective where the property owners are. And I think that probably people will want to say, oh, I live here, or whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
I think they have, they've seen that one a lot.
That's the one with the sub...
It is, yeah. I'm happy to bring it up there if you guys.
I think we've got copies of that in our papers here, so, thanks.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Tia Lewis. I'm the attorney for the applicant, the Lower Bridge Planned Development. We have a huge project team associated with this particular application, and I, not all of them are here to testify today, but I do want to acknowledge all of the consultants and the project team members that we've had to work on this. Beside me here is the applicant, Greg Daniels. He is the managing member of Lower Bridge LLC. We have Keith D'Agostino, he's our civil engineer from D'Agostino and Parker. We have Scott Wallace, he's going to help me with the PowerPoint. He's from the Wallace Group. Scott is our environmental consultant, has done the geotech and the dust control plans for the property. We have Joe Besman from Translight Consulting, he's our traffic engineer. Wendy Winty from Mason Bruce Gerard out of Portland, and she's our wildlife biologist. She's been on the site, studied the site-specific development, prepared the riparian area management plan for the property in cooperation with ODF and W. We have Newton Consultants, they did the water quality and water quantity testing for the property. And then we have the historical consultants, which are in that supplemental binder that was submitted with the application, that's Maul Foster. They were environmental cleanup and hazardous reporting. We had a soil scientist, Steve Werke, he did a detailed soil study when we changed zoning in 2008. And then we had PBS prepare a Phase 1, Level 1 environmental assessment on the property. So if you'll start, Scott, with the first slide. So I use this slide, excuse me, because this property is weirdly shaped. And it's very weirdly shaped for a reason. And so it's important, sorry. It's important that you understand why. And I'm going to give you a little bit of background on this because I realize that most of you weren't, well, you weren't the sitting board in 2008, obviously, but I know that you're familiar with what went on. But if you look at, if you go to the next slide, Scott. So that shape there is because in 2008, when we came and we asked for a zone change on this property, this is what we showed the county. This is in the record for the zone change in 2008. And if you'll look on the right side, the shape mirrors those lots, which are the area east of Lower Bridge Road, which is the subject property. And if you go back, can you go back to that prior one? If you notice that area west of Lower Bridge Road, that arm, sort of elbow shape, that property was added to the area where the zone change was approved in order to get to 20 lots so that we could use the east side property as an economic engine to help fund the cleanup of both the east side property and the west side property. And if you'll just go on to the next slide, if you will.
Can you go back to the, so how many, how many lot, no, back to the one you...
Mm-hmm.
This one or this?
Yes.
So how many lots did you have?
We had, in 2008, on the east side property, there were 18 shown there, and we wanted to get to 20, which is why they added that additional elbow area up in the, on the west side. And we agreed that that whole area up there would be open space. It wouldn't be developed, but it would be used to help us get to the 20 lots to help finance the project. So that was the discussion, it's all in the record for that 2008 zone change, which is also in this record. Okay, if you can go on to the next property. And so, back when this occurred in 2008, this property had, and I think you've heard quite a bit of the history of this property, it had been mined starting in the 20s and up to the 60s. And the mining had stopped, but there had been other uses for the property. The, there was no, all, the mining occurred prior to any environmental regulations, which would have required reclamation, prior to dogamie. And at the time, there were, there's a lot of environmental laws that help you with abandoned mine sites and help you with cleaning up environmentally degraded properties. There's the Comprehensive Resource and Recovery Act, there's the Superfund Act, there's Brownfield. All of these things are regulated through the EPA. And none of that money was available, and none of those requirements were on this property at that time. So it sat for 40 years with nothing happening. And if you look at that highlighted area, so when, in 2008, we came to the county and we said, this... And at that time, there was also unregulated reclamation efforts occurring on the property, which was causing all those dust storms, and you saw pictures of those dust storms. That was happening in 2006. Those were attempts at reclamation, but they were not regulated, and it broke the crust of the diatomite and started the dust events. So in 2008, we came to the county and we said, and Greg's going to talk to you about his background in cleaning up properties like this. We came to the county and we said, we have a pathway in order to get this property cleaned up, but we need to be able to finance the project, we need to be able to have an end game. You can't get somebody to invest millions of dollars in cleaning up a property only to leave it as a surface mine. Particularly a surface mine where all the resources were either uneconomical to mine or had been depleted. And so the county agreed at that time and took a chance on this property and helped us craft a pathway to get it cleaned up. And they split it in two. The west area had more serious environmental concerns and had been the site where the diatomite was mined. The east area had some surface mining and some solid waste disposal, but not significant amount of environmental degradation. And so at that time, the board split the property in two and again, added another 30 acres on the west side so that we could get to the 20 lots. When they changed the zoning in 2008, there were 10 conditions of approval. And all of those conditions have been met. The two most important ones are highlighted up there in terms of the environmental cleanup. If you can go on to the next slide, Scott.
You said you added 30 acres, don't you mean to the east side?
They added 30 acres from the west side to the east side, yes. Yes, as a part of the RR10 zoning, excuse me if I misspoke. So that zone change, as you heard in your work session, that zone change... Those are not the conditions. These are what I say, what we believe to be the effects from that 2008 zone change. Very similar to what you heard about vested rights in, when we were talking about the extension request. The zone change decision made some decisions that impact this decision today. And they made those decisions in 2008. Specifically, they established, that that zone change decision established this property as a non-resource designation. We went through the nonresource designation process, which is the equivalent of a goal exception. It is a way to change zoning on property from a resource use to a nonresource use that exists today and that is the equivalent of a goal exception. So that is going to speak a little bit to the minimum lot size arguments that you'll hear. But at that time, that decision ruled that there were no Goal III resources on this property, there were no Goal IV resources on this property, and there were no identified or inventoried Goal V resources on this property. The second thing that that zone change decision did is established the suitability of this property for residential use and under what conditions. The property is zoned RR10. It is not a conditional zoning, is not contingent on anything. It is zoned for rural residential use. It also used the cluster and the planned development form of subdivision as the example and as the catalyst to help fund the cleanup. And again, it added 30 acres from the west side as an example of how to get there. It also established what level of environmental cleanup was necessary on this property to receive residential subdivision approval. And that level of environmental cleanup was no further action letter from DEQ for residential use and a letter from the Oregon Health Authority that there was no apparent health hazard for residential use. Both of those letters are in our record, we have received those. We have taken the east side property through the voluntary cleanup process through DEQ in order to get those letters. And it also, the zone change decision, also confirmed who is the responsible agency with that, that contains the expertise to evaluate the environmental condition of the property. And again, those letters have been received or, and are in the record. And at that time, oh, sorry, I'm not ready for that yet, but that's okay. Excuse me, at the time of the 2008 zone change, the record reflects that all of the opponents, with the exception of the named appellant who bought his property in 2011, participated in that zone change decision. They came and they testified before the county, they submitted written comments. Nobody appealed that zone change decision. And in addition to the named appellant, or in addition to the opponents, again, other than the named appellant, State Parks was notified of that 2008 zone change decision and submitted no comments. ODF and W participated, Redmond Parks and Rec, Land Watch, and again, the neighbors. And none of those people appealed that 2008 decision. So then, go on to the next slide. In 2015, we submitted the tentative subdivision plan. And this resulted in the 2015 hearings officer's decision that you'll hear a lot about today and that you've heard a little bit about before now. We filed this 2015 subdivision before we had received the NFA and the no apparent health hazard letters on the east side. Because if you recall that slide where I showed you what those conditions were, the conditions were only that we received those prior to final plat approval. Again, establishing an end use for this property as a residential subdivision was key to getting the financing necessary in order to invest in the remediation to clean this property up. And so the county agreed that we could come forward with a tentative subdivision plan and get that approved and that we would only need to have our environmental letters prior to final plat approval. That's what the 2008 zone change decision says. So in 2015, we came forward with the subdivision plan. But at that time, the county board was not comfortable approving the subdivision request without the NFA letters, despite the language in the 2008 decision. And because we wanted to respect their comfort level and because we wanted, we knew we were very close to receiving the NFA letters, we withdrew that 2015 subdivision plan in front of the county board, without the county board ruling on it. So the only thing you have ruling on in that 2015 subdivision plan is a hearings officer's decision, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Okay, next slide, please. So now the present application is very similar to the 2015 application with the, and again, very similar to the 2008 lot layout configuration that we showed with the zone change, with the exception of Lot 1, which has been moved in order to account for the sign, for the historic sign. And we excluded the EFU acreage. There's 10 acres of EFU land on the southern boundary pursuant to the hearings officer's recommendation in 2015 decision. So you can go to that next, unless Phil wants to see that for a few more minutes.
That last statement you made about you excluded the 10 acres, which is south.
Yeah, on that south.
You, then you added some more on the west, is that...
No, that west side area was always a part of the prior one. You want to go back to that, excuse me?
That's right, just those two parts have always been part of it.
Yes.
I think it's where the tower is and the structure was, and the river.
Correct, yes. So then if you go to the, what is different now? Okay. So between the 2015 decision and now, we have a couple of different things that are occurring. First of all, the hearings officer that issued the 2015 decision did not have the nine-county historical decisions using floodplain for open space. Those decisions, it's not easy to research these decisions within the county system. You can't just type in cluster subdivisions and get them all. It's, it's kind of complicated, so it took a while for those to surface. And that hearings officer did not have those decisions. In fact, one of those decisions was written by the same hearings officer in 2015 that, in approving the use of open space in a, in a cluster subdivision. We also have the floodplain amendment process where the board, we have the evidence of the board deliberations and the decisions outlining how floodplain-zoned acreage should be treated and whether or not it's appropriate to use the open space in the cluster and planned unit developments. Now, I recognize that that floodplain amendment process has been suspended. I also recognize that there's some argument that the opponents are using that that somehow supports their appeal. But in my opinion, the county did the responsible thing. But i- in my opinion, the county did the responsible thing in suspending that process because there's decisions that need to be made and you have dual processes going on. And we have scarce county resources being expended on legislative actions. It makes sense to suspend it while this process goes through because some of those decisions that you're making, that you're going to make as a part of this process will impact that. So it has, it's not telling that you disagree with the amendments. It's not telling that you think the amendments aren't necessary. What it tells it, us is that you're using our county dollars responsibly by waiting when you have dual processes going on and trying to decide the same things in separate processes. So, the other thing that's different is the environmental cleanup on the east side has been completed now in 2015. Again, we were pretty far along, but not quite done yet. We also have a detailed biological study and a riparian area protection plan for this property. We did that as a part of complying with what will be, uh, one day, the floodplain code provisions that the county's going to adopt. Our purpose in pursuing the present application now is not to avoid compliance with that future code. In fact, we want to comply with that future code, we just can't wait any longer because it's been twelve years since we have been spending money on this property to get it to this spot. So, we went ahead and made sure that our application would meet both the current code as well as the provisions of the adopted code. And then, lastly, we have, right now, before you, the one that's on appeal, the 2019 hearings officer's decision, which found that we complied with all approval criteria except the two that we have named in our appeal, the financial ability and the SMEA review, both of which are evidentiary matters which we can address and will address as a part of this hearing. So then, if we move on to the next slide. I know that Will gave you a memo in your work session with eight issues to consider for appeal, and he went through a lot of those today. And while I don't disagree that there are factual or sub-issues related to some of the things, and in fact, the opponents are going to bring those up to you, but in our opinion, there are two issues that you need to decide in this appeal. The first one is the financial ability of the applicant to complete the project in four years. That's a substantial evidence question and whether or not there's substantial evidence in the record to support that. I'll talk about what that evidence is in a minute. The second issue is the site, the, um, surface mining impact area review. Again, that's a substantial evidence question about whether or not there's sufficient evidence in the record to support findings of compliance. And I'll tell you about that evidence in a minute. If you'll click...
On the burden of proof, uh, substantial evidence, so what percent of evidence is that? Is that more than fifty percent, or is it, could it be twenty-five percent to four, fifty percent?
The test for substantial evidence in a, um, in a land use proceeding is what, what a reasonable person would conclude based on a review of all the evidence. So it doesn't have like a clear and convincing, it's, it's a, it's a lesser standard than clear and convincing, but it doesn't have like the percentage sort of requirements that you would see in, in a litigation context.
You think it's more than a preponderance, or less than a preponderance?
I think that, um, it's, it's a very similar standard to a preponderance. It's, it's what a reasonable person would conclude after reviewing all the evidence, both the evidence supporting whatever it is that you're being asked, as well as any contradictory evidence, and whether or not that evidence is believable.
Good.
So if you'll click, Scott, it should add, there we go. So in addition to the two issues that we asked you to, to, to review on appeal, we also asked you to accept and adopt the hearings officer's decision with regard to the code interpretation on the floodplain and open space. The, the specific findings from the hearings officer on those issues are found at pages twenty-one through twenty-four of the decision, as well as fifty-nine through sixty-three. And this, in my opinion, is the essence of the opponent's appeal and, and where all of the little issues that Will listed for you get teased out under that third one. But to, to approve this application today, or when you deliberate, what we need is for you to accept our evidence on the one and two, those appeal issues, and issue findings that we, that there is substantial evidence in the record to meet those two, and then simply to accept and adopt the hearings officer's findings. The hearings officer wrote detailed findings, a hundred and fifty-nine page decision, from a lawyer that's been practicing land use for thirty-plus years. He wrote very good findings, very supportable findings, and he based those findings on a review, not only of the historical documents, but a review of all of the evidence in the record beforehand. And, and, and his decision specifically says, "I'm not relying on these past nine decisions because they don't really tease out the legal issues." The hearings officers in those cases just accepted the use of floodplain acreage as open space, "But I'm basing this decision on a review of the county code, the county comprehensive plan provisions, and all of the evidence in the record before me." So if you'll go on to the next one. So then, the opponent's appeal, they raised three issues in their appeal. And again, in my opinion, those are all subsumed within the code interpretation on the floodplain and the open space. Every one of those issues on appeal is about a local code interpretation, whether it be the county zoning code or the county comprehensive plan. And every one of those issues on appeal was decided in our favor by the hearings officer at the pages referenced on that slide. Oh, and I do have these PowerPoint slides for you so that you don't have to keep turning around. Can hand those to them, and then I have one for the record as well.
Well, you didn't wait till the very end to give them.
I know, I'm sorry, I just realized that because you keep having to turn around and look at it, and I, I apologize for that.
Well, that's great, thank you.
So then, let's go on. So the first issue on our appeal, we're just going to jump right into that, is the financial ability. The evidence in the record already that we submitted in front of the hearings officer is the documented history of significant expense to reclaim and develop this property over the course of a twelve-year period by this applicant. It, he spent over, at this point, three million dollars, he'll talk to you about that. He testified in front of the hearings officer, and we have this documented evidence of this expense, as well as all of the consultant reports, the well drilling, the voluntary cleanup process through the Environmental Protection Agency, or through DEQ. And in fact, this was the only evidence in the record with regard to the financial ability to complete the project. So when it's the only evidence in the record, it by definition is substantial evidence. But the hearings officer didn't believe that to be the case, and, and Mr. Daniels testified, his testimony in front of the hearings officer was our evidence in addition to the documented history of expense. And so respecting his opinion in that regard, we have submitted additional evidence on appeal. It came in, I believe, on Monday. We had our civil engineer prepare a cost estimate to complete the project, and we submitted a money market account showing twice the amount of money in the account than is necessary to complete the project. And we also have a contingency, a ten percent contingency in the construction cost. So then, moving on to the SMEA review, this issue was a little bit confusing for the hearings officer and it, we have to take the blame for that. We submitted an application for SMEA review. We paid the fee for SMEA review. We, uh, the county noticed the application for SMEA review in addition to the tentative plan, and we submitted evidence and findings addressing the SMEA review.
SMEA is surface mining?
Surface mining and impact area.
Impact area.
And so, and we have two mining sites that give rise to this need to do SMEA review. One of them is SM461, that's our site on the west side. The other is SM322, which is on the former Dunn property across the river, what, what you saw as the vineyard. Neither of these sites are operational, both have been closed by Dogami. Both would require a, um, land use as well as a Dogami process in order to reopen them. The, the SM322 site is in the River Canyon, right next to the Borden Beck Park. Our site is not going to be mined, again, we are asked, we've asked for a zone change on that site. So, we're doing SMEA review for mining sites that don't exist, and we're, and these, and the SMEA review is to protect the mine operator from having noise and dust-sensitive uses located in an area that would cause him to fall out of compliance with his regulatory guidelines. Well, both of these mining sites predate regulatory guidelines, so even if they were operating, they wouldn't be falling out of compliance with them because they don't have them. But nevertheless, we did the SMEA review. We argued in front of the hearings officer that SMEA review relates to noise and dust-sensitive uses, and it should be done at the time that you're locating a structure. And so he thought that we didn't ask for it, or that we didn't submit sufficient evidence. But we did apply for it, we did notice it, we did submit evidence, and we've submitted additional evidence on appeal in front of you to show that both, that any buildable area on the nineteen lot subdivision is over two-hundred-and-fifty feet from either one of these mining sites, and that we will conduct a, or that we will, um, record per lot SMEA waivers for, on this final plat.
Is two-hundred-and-fifty a documented standard of something?
Yes, that's where you would either need the mine operator to waive the setback requirement, or you would need, um, or you need to not locate it within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And, and again, as, as the operator for 61, we would absolutely waive the setback requirement, but our buildable envelopes aren't anywhere, aren't, aren't, are over two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And again, that evidence came into you on Monday in our letter.
You don't need a waiver for distance, but you would still need the...
Waivers of remonstrance, meaning that we won't remonstrate against the mine operator.
For each platted...
For each lot, correct. And we will, we will record those as a condition of final plat approval.
And so, the SMEA review is, in a normal circumstance, I'll say, you're having to prove that you won't affect the surface mining rights of neighboring surface mining properties who might want to be still in the surface mining business.
Correct.
Kind of the gist of it. And you're saying, one of them you control, and so you're saying, you waive it because you own it. And the other one, you're saying, is that 322, is that the other one?
That's correct.
And so you're saying, it's closed, so there's no, you can't, there's, you can't impact it because it's not able to operate.
It's not operating, and it would require a permit in order to be open, and it's down in the River Canyon. It was a small surface mine, it actually has a trust deed on it that restricts the area of the surface mining to a one-point-five acre area.
So is it basically that vineyard area? I mean, we, we saw that.
Down, um, let me see if I can...
I mean, it's on our, it's actually on your map, isn't it?
Yeah, so, uh...
On this map.
322 is roughly right about here.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can see it better, this is not a really detailed aerial, but you can see it better on some of those maps, you can see where it's kind of, the ground's kind of stretched off.
So you're saying, what you put into the record originally, you thought met the test based on the conditions of the neighboring, but you've added more to the record now?
That's correct. And, and staff also issued findings on that, on the, um, compliance with those approval criteria. So those are the only two issues that the hearings officer found that the evidence to be lacking, and we have submitted additional evidence that we believe constitutes substantial evidence upon which the board can base findings for the approval criteria, to, to approve the project based on those criteria. And again, all of the other issues that are going to be raised before you today, the hearings officer has already ruled on, he's provided very detailed and extensive findings, and we ask that you adopt his findings and add any findings of your own related to the issues obviously that come before you. If you can go on to the next. So, these are, I've grouped floodplain, open space, Goal V issues all together, because really, um, there's a, there's a few issues under there that get teased out, but they're not complicated, and they're really, the board has already ruled by virtue of undertaking the floodplain amendment process. And the findings, if you look at the findings, I recognize that it's been withdrawn, but the findings in that process that you guys adopted establish the, the historical treatment of the floodplain acreage as open space. They established the county's process to allow that. They also established the board's inclination to read the code that way, and the belief that that provides a, a very protective mechanism for these resources. But the other thing I want you to understand is, is that the floodplain code was adopted in nineteen-seventies, well before the county's Goal V process. And that the zone boundaries of the floodplain are based on FEMA maps, entirely based on the land's propensity to flood. It is not based on resource inventories. It is not based on the presence of resources within the floodplain at all. It is based entirely upon the FEMA maps, which are the propensity of lands to flood. The Goal V resource inventory and the program that the county adopted through the comprehensive plan, and it's ultimately implemented through the zoning ordinance, was adopted in nineteen-ninety-two. And the county undertook an inventory of the Goal V resources, they did the EC analysis, and for each Goal V resource, there is a program to achieve the goal. And if you go through it, it's in the county's comprehensive plan, and it's in the adopting ordinance for the, the Goal V resources. There's fish habitat, there's deer winter range, there's deer migration corridors, there's elk habitat, sensitive bird, waterfowl, upland game birds. Under each one of those listed resources, there is a program to achieve the goal. And under that program, it describes what the county code provisions are, and what the county policies are, and how they're going to protect that particular resource. And not one of those programs to achieve the goal lists the floodplain zone provisions related to open space as one of the mechanisms to achieve these goals. What they did was they adopted the wildlife area combining zone as one of the programs to achieve the goal. That zone is not on our property. They adopted the landscape management combining zone as one of the programs to achieve the goal, which is on our property and which we are subject to and will comply with. They adopted the sensitive bird and mammal habitat combining zone, again, not on this property. Open space and conservation zone, again, not on this property. Not one of the inventoried Goal V resources listed in the county's comprehensive plan was inventoried on the subject property. And they updated that Goal V inventory in two thousand and nine, and again, did not expand the boundaries of those overlay zones that were adopted for the Goal V program. The floodplain zone is not a zone that was adopted to achieve the Goal V program. And other, and then the LM zone, none of the, the zones were adopted to achieve the Goal V program. Oh, I'm running out of time, so...
Well, uh, since we asked a lot of questions, we'll extend another five minutes at least.
Okay, I do have, um, I, I do want the, my client to be able to speak, as well as, um, Scott Wallace is our, um, environmental consulting engineer. So I'm just going to stop right now and let them go, and then I can clean anything up on rebuttal.
Greg Daniels, seven zero four four eight, Budini, Black Butte Ranch, nine seven seven five nine. I'm, uh, representing the applicant, the representative who's been involved in this since, uh, two thousand and six. I, I came to, uh, this project with quite extensive background in environmental conditions on real estate in the Pacific Northwest. Experience in projects both at, on the Columbia River, on the Clackamas River, extensive projects in Vancouver, Washington, Columbia Shores, was an old arsenic mine. Before that, Kaiser built its ships there, they built the bridge, concrete effort for Glen Jackson Bridge. We reclaimed that property and built a community there, uh, on the Clackamas River, community of hundreds of homes built on the Clackamas River. When I came to the project in two thousand and six, it was with people that had, uh, an issue at the same time the county had an issue. This property was blowing dust, making quite a, a mess of the properties surrounding it. And on top of that, there were back taxes owed to the county. The county inevitably would have ended up with this property had those taxes gone, not be paid. I stepped in and, um, ended up, over the, the past thirteen years now, have been involved trying to commit to do something that would make sense out of this project, simply said, of dollars coming from the project, be able, let it be reclaimed to match the neighborhoods around it and benefit from what you commissioners saw and understand to be a very beautiful location in central Oregon. To date, I've invested over three million dollars in both improvements. We had a quarter of a mile pivot on the property even before we came to you as commissioners, and spent numerous hundreds of thousands of dollars flying grass seed in with a neighbor, and having that process started even before we came, so we could tell you, we're not talking the talk, we're walking the walk. To summarize, after doing those things, and the county commissioners at, in two thousand and eight, uh, being willing to have a process happen, which has happened now since two thousand and eight, I am here today to ask your help in letting us follow through with that process. We have, uh, made promises to one another on what was going to happen out there. We have, uh, a hearings officer that gave approval, uh, on all but the two items Tia outlined earlier, uh, and I'm here to ask... and I'm here to ask for, for the ability now to be able to deliver what we promised to do to the, for the county in 2008. Thank you very much.
And then we just have a brief statement by our, assuming that you guys might want to actually ask him some questions, because he's been our environmental consultant from the outset and has taken it through the DEQ process. We can save it for rebuttal if we're, you know, too close for time, it's fine.
Well, we've asked quite a few questions, so go ahead and...
Okay, Scott Wallace, for the record, with the Wallace Group here in Bend. We were retained by the Lower Bridge Road LLC in 2014 to begin working through this, these conditions that were environmental in nature. We established a, a work plan under the voluntary cleanup program with the Department of Environmental Quality. We worked collaboratively with them to come up with a scope, schedule, and what we were going to look at. And so, you know, six years later, well, actually, it didn't take a full six years. Our work on the East parcel and portions of the West parcel that were required as part of what's before you today were completed in 2017. That work was summarized into a cleanup report, which DEQ and the Oregon Health Authority reviewed, and I believe it was in late 2017 when a formal no further action determination and determination of no public health impact was issued by those agencies. We looked at soil, we looked at groundwater, we looked at air, we looked at residual mining allegations related to crystalline silica, we looked at asbestos. We did, you know, part and parcel with DEQ, we worked through all of those environmental issues and concerns, and that was the basis for that finding in late 2017. So, you know, there was a lot of work that went into that. Mr. Daniels paid our bills every month with the, the goal of getting through the process, and, you know, it took three-plus years to do it. So it's all in the record. I'm available, obviously, to answer any questions, you know, that you may have, but I think that, you know, the, the objective was work through the appropriate regulatory agencies to get their determinations, and they have issued those, and that kind of speaks for the, the body of work that we did.
Just in anticipation, is there, I don't know if we're going to hear evidence of still, there still being environmental, environmental problems? I don't know.
Well, you know, these, as is mentioned before, there was the East parcel and the West parcel. The East parcel is before you today for deliberation and so forth. There was work that was performed on the West parcel because of the concerns that, that the commissioners had about things on the West parcel that may affect the East parcel. Those were specifically related to the crystalline silica that was, that was allegedly on site on the West parcel, because that's where most of the dicholite mining took place and the processing plant and everything else. So that was part of the work that we did for this East parcel remedial investigation. It also, you know, the, the historical hazardous waste lagoons on the West parcel, there was concern that, well, if they leaked, then that could have got into groundwater, and that would represent a risk to residential development on the East side, because the general direction of groundwater flow in this area, the county is, is east northeast. So we did look at, at both, you know, the, the crystalline silica issue, blowing dust, and groundwater as it related to potential development on the East parcel as part of this work. Now, right now, as we speak, we're working through the identical VCP program with DEQ to address those remaining issues, just like we did on the East side, applicable to the West side. There's, you know, some more stuff to address in that work. We expect to have our report probably within the next month for that work that's been done on the West parcel, and, and again, we're working with the project manager, Bob Schwartz, with DEQ, who's here today. So that's in process, but a lot of that work was done as part of this East side cleanup effort back in 14 through 17.
Questions?
How many wells do you have on the parcel on the East side? I know I remember, so there are a couple.
There are two.
Two wells?
Two groundwater monitoring wells, which were used to sample both the upper aquifer. There's an upper aquifer that's within 100 feet of ground surface, and there's a lower aquifer that's over 250 feet deep, but they are separate. But we have water quality data from both.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think that's, we'll conclude the applicant for now. If we, there may be some other things on rebuttal that we'll want to have addressed, so.
Thank you.
So this will be the time now that the appellants would have for their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have copies of our hearing memorandum and candy there?
Appeal memorandum? Yep, we've got that. And we may have copies of other things. We have a lot of things, so. Was this, and I was curious, was this just for the sake of today's hearing, or was this prior to that?
This was, this was prepared as a summary of our, the legal side of our argument for today's hearing.
Okay, good.
Before we begin, I've got a, well, let me state for the record, Tim Ramis from the firm Jordan Ramis here today on behalf of Calpa Holdings, the appellant in the case. Calpa has participated throughout the case. I guess a procedural question or suggestion might be, I'm assigned 30 minutes, but I doubt that I'll need that. It might make sense for me to ask that the additional time be used by Liz Dixon and David Jenkins, because they are folks who join in these arguments, and it might make sense to get their framework for the appeal out before you hear testimony from individuals. That's a request.
Yeah. You know, when we discussed this, I thought we'd had a separate category for the attorneys for other parties, and it looked a little different than what I saw today. I thought they did have an additional time. Do you recall?
I don't recall that. Perhaps Will does, but...
Didn't think they had...
Certainly, if the primary appellant's willing to allocate time to some others, that's certainly within the purview of the board grant.
Okay. Do you have any problem with that?
No.
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. You're going to hear from others today about detail of the facts in the case and some of the factual controversies. You have our memorandum that lays out the issues on the legal side, so I'm not going to repeat what you have and to try to present this in an economic way. But I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the policy implications of the case and the specific policy precedent you're being asked to affirm and decide in this particular appeal. And there are really two parts of that. One is, what are the policy choices you have with respect to density next to sensitive riparian areas? And second, what's the procedure? What's the best procedure to use to decide that policy question? When I say process choices, I mean the choice between, on the one hand, deciding policy for the whole county by deciding a single case and establishing precedent that then will apply in the future, versus the alternative procedure of using your legislative process to consider evidence regarding the whole county and using legislation to establish the precedent. Those, I think, are the, the policy choices, the, the process choices. The fundamental policy question is the issue of whether to be aggressive or conservative with respect to the level of density you allow immediately next to sensitive riparian habitat in floodplains. One choice that I would call the conservative choice is to go with somewhat lesser densities next to those sensitive areas. That would be a little friendlier to the environment and not allow quite as much housing. The alternative approach, that, that, sorry, that first approach is represented by the 2015 decision of your hearings officer, which makes it more difficult to borrow essentially density from the floodplain area and add it to the upland areas. The alternative approach, more aggressive, I would characterize it, favors more density next to the floodplain areas, and that approach is represented by the hearings officer's recommendation in this case regarding the application of your code. It would allow greater densities next to sensitive floodplain areas. One way to look at this is where you put the required open space for a PD development. Under the 2015 decision, the reasoning is that floodplain zones do not allow PD development. Open space is a required component of PD development, so you can't place the required open space for a PD in a floodplain, because it's part of the PD development and not permitted there. That is...
Are you saying PUD?
PUD, sorry.
So you abbreviated the abbreviation?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Whoa.
I'm trying to watch the clock here. And that's, that's the point. If, if the PUD requires open space and the PUD is not permitted in the floodplain zone, then how can you use the floodplain zone to satisfy the PUD open space requirements? The hearings officer in, in the case you have before you took a different approach, took a, I would say, more turns in terms of his analysis to get to the idea that open space is free-floating and can be used in the floodplain. The result is this. The difference is, if you've got to use the upland area for open space, then there's less available land for density, for lots, and therefore you come up with less density. If you are allowed to use the floodplain areas to meet the open space requirement, then there's more land available upland, and you can put more lots there. That's the difference between the two approaches. That's why I call one conservative and one more aggressive. In the decision you're going to make today, you're asked to set a precedent on those, precedent on those questions. Do you adopt the 2015 more conservative approach, or do you adopt the hearings officer's approach in this case, allowing more density? In terms of the wisdom of how you establish precedent, the weakness in simply deciding this case and applying it county-wide is that you don't really have data on what the implications are for the rest of the county. You don't know how many sites will be affected. You don't know the degree of sensitivity of those sites. You don't know how many and where there are developable places next to sensitive riparian areas. That would be good data to have if you were establishing a policy county-wide. And so I see that as the, as the greatest weakness of using this individual case to decide precedent. The alternative, of course, is to use a legislative procedure to do that. The, the use of the legislative procedure, of course, started, you've begun that process, you have a procedure in place that could be used, it's, it's been stalled for now, but one approach to this problem would be to deny the current application with the understanding that the application can come back, a new application can be filed, once you establish what the procedure, what the policy should be for the county, whether to adopt the 2015 decision as your policy or not. There is, of course, always risk that when you focus on an individual case to set precedent, the full view of what the policy implications are can be missed. I've read that there is an ancient Egyptian saying, which may be carved in stone, I don't know, and it's this, "Because we focused on the snake, we missed the scorpion." We're always at risk, of course, that when we focus on just what's before us, that we miss the bigger picture. And that is, I think, the concern in this case.
Well, I, I need to ask you a couple of questions.
Yes.
I don't know how, if this is your only, but... So you're kind of setting up this binary world of the 15 decision and the 19 decision, and you're saying that it almost sounds like you think 15 is a precedent and 19's out of line. Our understanding is there's quite a few other decisions that were similar to 19's, hearings officer. So when you set up this, this or this, it's really this, or this is this, this is this, which has matched this, isn't that correct?
Let me, I'm glad you asked that question. The hearings officer, I think, was very correct in saying that those previous decisions were not precedent. They were not precedent because they didn't address the specific question of whether or not to interpret the code to allow this transfer of density from floodplains. I think, I think he was quite correct in that.
Because it's like, attorney Lewis said, you know, there's 158 pages, so is it in there somewhere, they separate out all these others as non-presidential?
Yes, the hearings officer...
And we'll be able to find that.
Yes.
Now, did they do it inadvertently by just, without dealing with it? In fact, they just, they operated as if it was fact?
I think inadvertent is a good description. There was no specific analysis.
That might be a bad word, I'm just, I'm trying to give you a word, yeah.
I would agree with that. The, the point, I think, is that there is a decision to be made between two choices, two policy choices, one more aggressive, one more conservative in terms of housing and environmental protection, and that the argument I'm making is that you may well want to make that decision actually in the context of a legislative enactment, so you consider the application of the, of the rule county-wide. And it certainly would mean for the applicant, in this case, some delay, but it would not mean the end of the application. It would simply mean that, once you've established the rule clearly, that, that the application could come back. The two, sorry.
I do want to say something about that, because I don't think you've been at any of our work sessions where we've talked about this. When we pulled the legislative changes off the docket, and the other commissioners can speak for themselves, it was never my understanding that, I didn't realize it was going to affect this case or other cases. And it wasn't because of this case or other cases we really, in my understanding, pulled them off. It was for some other reasons. But it's been argued by your, by you and your firm that, oh, well, that shows an indication, inclination to feel this way. For me, as one commissioner, that wasn't true. We just pulled them off for some other reasons. We thought there was something that Luba might need that we hadn't done, was my understanding. So I don't want you to read too much into that as a philosophy. I mean, and I don't know how you felt any differently.
I certainly understand that and respect your point of view on that.
I just, yeah, I don't think you'd been at our, I've said this a couple of times since we've been reviewing...
There is video, which I've had the opportunity to look at. So I understand your position on it, I respect it, and simply want to point out, that's not the case I'm making at this point. I'm trying to describe to you an alternative path for everyone that will, would create more clarity. The chief advantage of using the legislative process, it seems to me, is clarity, and to the extent that your rules are clear, it would reduce, I think, the potential for ongoing litigation over the matter. It's also a superior approach, because it allows you to have all the information you might need from your perspective to make the policy choice. In this case, you have all the information that us as parties, we as parties feel you need, but in a legislative context, you're able to dictate what information you need for the decision. So I would encourage you to look before you leave by getting all of that information before making the decision. There's a lot to be said for not relying on blind faith and, and moving ahead based upon the data. So we're obviously here to ask for your wisdom in making the decision on this case and on the overall policy. We think the wise course would be to deny the, deny the application in this case, make the policy decision, clarify your code, be clear for all the parties, and then allow a new application to proceed. Thank you. See the rest of my time.
Thank you. Okay, so I think, you know how many minutes?
Okay, so I think, you know how many minutes we went through there? Seventeen minutes. So allowed or we've been through? Okay. So we have, you have two other attorneys that wanted to speak today on the representing groups? Yes, three? Three other attorneys? What's that? Okay. So, well, Liz, we've got you as the first speaker anyway, so do you want to come up first? Who was the other attorney that was, wanted to speak?
It may be that Attorney Ramis has referenced David Jenkins.
Oh, okay.
David is part of Friends of Lower Bridge, and so I would like to have him have part of the time to have that, or if that's okay.
Okay, sure.
He's going to do the detail on the environmental, which is going to take some time.
Sure. Well, so under the rules, we have this seventeen minutes, I guess, and we have the five minutes apiece, so I guess split three ways, so I don't know. So you'll just take your five minutes. So you have 25 minutes or 27?
If David and I are together, have 27 minutes.
Twenty-seven minutes, yep.
Got it.
Is that, if that works for you. We're trying to make sure we get all the, there's a lot of legal things in this, so it's good to hear, hear your understandings of those.
Need to set up here, Liz.
I always like those scenes on TV where the judge says, "Tick-tock, counselor." I'm kidding.
Have to do it.
Yeah.
Are they all horizontal? Where so many of us are using this.
Yeah.
You have to set up.
That's all right.
Good afternoon.
Okay. My name is Liz Dixon. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Dixon Hatfield here in Bend, and I represent Diane Lozito and the Friends of Lower Bridge before you today. The Friends of Lower Bridge is an organization of concerned neighbors within the view shed of the subject property. You visited the site last Friday and I think got a pretty good idea of where the subject property is and where these other residences are in surrounding areas adjacent to that High Point. These are neighbors who live in those surrounding areas. The Friends of Lower Bridge are opposed to the proposed 19-lot residential planned unit cluster development, which consists of 2.2 to 5-acre lots totaling 42.5 acres, which is significantly less than they would have to have available for each residential property but for the fact that it's a cluster development. They're only allowed to do that, in this case, if the floodplain-zoned property is counted as both floodplain and open space, meaning they want you to let them double count. The reason that that's questionable as a policy is because floodplain and open space have different functions in land use world. The intention of floodplain land is that it be land that is often affected by water and that it also supports water-based life. And so it's set aside, and that's by state law as well as having been implemented in your county policies. Open space is an entirely different beast. Open space is land that is intended to make up for the fact that you're doing this cluster development. And in this case, as you can see in the applicant's site plan, what they have done is arrange 19 lots along the hairpin that makes up the ridge above the river so that they can get maximum river view lots. But what that means is that the open space that would normally be required to make the subdivision have a similar feel to the subdivisions around them is hidden back behind where nobody can see it. So from the perspective of the neighbors, what you have is not a cluster development. It's a two-to-five lot subdivision running along the rim. Open space is intended to make up for that perception so that instead of seeing lands really closely developed in a really intense pattern that is unlike any pattern around it, you say, well, you're clustered together for purposes of having infrastructure, but you're separated out because you have all the additional open space, so it ends up being a wash. So they're asking you to allow the floodplain to be used as open space when the floodplain already has its own separate purpose. And they're asking you furthermore to give them the benefit of the bonus for including the increased density in this cluster development. Bottom line, they're asking you to let them cram a lot more houses into a lot less space than you would ever ordinarily allow. And it's because of the way they're asking you to interpret floodplain and the way they're asking you to interpret open space to get them to that level of high density. The neighbors are also very concerned about the fact that directly below this hairpin is a scenic waterway. And the scenic waterway is protected habitat, and there's also a wildlife preserve that is managed by Central Oregon Parks and Rec. So this area, even if these resource values weren't there, is still an area that doesn't make sense for floodplain and open space reasons. But it also doesn't make sense because it's adjoining the Deschutes River and the benefits that come along with being adjoining to the Deschutes River. So we have scenic waterway right next to it, and we have a wildlife preserve right next to it. We also have habitat issues next to it. We also have the potential impact on the middle Deschutes. So either one of these looked at separately would be reason alone to say this was a bad idea. Put together, the Friends of Lower Bridge argue it's a doubly bad idea. The Friends of Lower Bridge have actively opposed for over a decade as various owners have tried to get approval for new uses of the subject property. And as they've gone through this process, they have more and more often argued, well, you have to let us do it or you'll get the property back for no taxes. My understanding is that assistant county councils made the determination that that's not the case, that if you chose not to accept an environmentally contaminated site for failure to pay taxes, you could do that. But more importantly, the Friends of Lower Bridge are opposed to this because it's their sense that this is not the proper use of the subject property. Forget the county should let them clean it up or the county will get it back. The more important use is they're talking about 19 residential homes sitting on top of a known contaminated site in an area where that density is not appropriate. Our goal today is to be more general in our approach to you because you've heard a lot of specifics. They get you into details very quickly, but you haven't heard these issues before. Commissioner DeBonne has, but Commissioners Henderson and Adair have not. And so I think it's important to kind of get back from the small issues and look at the big issues that are in play here. Friends of Lower Bridge opposes this proposal. It requires a conditional use approval, which, as you will recall, is an approval that says it has to be compatible with the neighboring uses. This is not compatible with neighboring uses, whether it be surface mining or large-scale residential or farming. There's nothing about this application that's compatible with surrounding uses. It's an area that requires a tentative subdivision plan for a cluster development approval. The application before you doesn't meet the cluster development requirements because it doesn't have enough open space. The surface mining impact area compatibility approval of two adjacent mines, they have tried to shave down by saying, first of all, they control one, and they'll say that's not going to be a problem, and the other one's so small it's insignificant. That's not the way Goal 5 works. Goal 5 says if you have resource lands and you have designated them in your comp plan, which you have, you protect those and everything else takes a backseat. It is inappropriate for the applicant to argue around the fact that those really aren't important, that they don't really matter, and we'll whaver them off. Goal 5 is very stringent, and they haven't complied with Goal 5. The hearings officers, the 2019 hearings officer's decision nailed them for that. They said you didn't meet the surface mining rules, and they're trying to minimize them. But the fact remains, that's one of the few things that both the 2015 and the 2019 hearings officer agreed on, which is that those surface mining rules give that resource top priority, and that resource has not been dealt with in accordance with the law in this circumstance. The next issue that Friends of Lower Bridge is a reason for, feels as a reason for opposing is that the applicant is minimizing the feasibility issues. And this is a little bit of a delicate argument. The applicant is essentially giving you details in areas that are favorable to them and not giving you details in areas that are not favorable to them. The result of that is, for example, we don't have ordinary high-water mark measurements on any of the site plans available to you, and that's what's required for making a lot of the setback determinations. The ordinary high-water mark measurements aren't there. They show the center line of the river. They show where the floodplain is, but they don't show where the ordinary high-water mark is, and that's required for measuring setbacks. They don't show you rimrock location. And Commissioner Henderson noted, "I didn't see a lot of rimrock." Well, that's understandable. They've been mining the site for 100 years, and we have photographic evidence in the 2015 record showing that a lot of the overburden was put over the rimrock. And there are actually places where there are chemical deposits, white powdery chemical deposits that we will submit into the record, showing it actually pours over the top and goes down into the river. So the reason that Commissioner Henderson doesn't see rimrock is because it's been covered up. The purpose of the rimrock setback is to find the rimrock and set back 50 feet from it. The applicant has been reluctant throughout this process in doing the rimrock survey and identifying where the rimrock should be or is, or is underneath what's been deposited on top of it. And that's something that they've omitted in this process.
So you said white powdery chemicals being pushed around. I mean, that's a pretty strong statement in saying we have a clear, you know, environmental study. So I'm just acknowledging that there's dicholite, there's white powdery substance everywhere, and you're calling it a chemical. So it's just interesting.
I understand, Commissioner DeBonne. What we have are photographs showing the white powdery substance going over the rimrock down toward the river. We will submit those into the record. We're not allowed to go on the site. We're not allowed to test anything. So, so what the Friends of Lower Bridge have had to do is rely upon photographs and reports and things that Mr. Jenkins will show you.
Thank you.
The other thing that they have not-
I'm right in line with that. You'd made a comment earlier about a known contaminated site. I took it as the, those letters from DEQ and Oregon Health Authority as saying it was no longer a contaminated site. So can't something be a once-contaminated site, no longer so? Or are you maintaining it's still contaminated? DEQ's wrong or?
The argument of Friends of Lower Bridge is that the significant contamination that occurred on the site over its three primary uses over the century have not been accounted for as being cleaned up. And if you look at the DEQ letter, what the DEQ letter says is, based upon the information provided to us, we conclude no further actions required at this time. There's an important paragraph in every NFA letter which says, if we find additional information or if additional information is made aware of us, we'll open this back up. And in this case, the way DEQ has handled this examination, the applicant has paid for it, the applicant has staffed it, and the applicant has provided both the questions and the answers. So it puts all of us in an awkward position, and Mr. Jenkins can deal with that a lot more detailed than I can when we get to him. The septic system requirements and drain field locations have also not been dealt with by the applicant at all. There have been no studies of where you could put septic or what kind of septic would be required, and whether that fits on the size of the lots that have been provided to you once you allow for setbacks. Groundwater suitability for 19 separate wells, notice they're proposing not to do a community water system, which is what we normally look for in cluster developments. In this case, what they're doing is they're suggesting everybody have their own, which interestingly enough is exempt from the usual testing requirements by the OWRD. When you drill a well just for yourself, you don't have to go through the same testing. And they have not verified cleanup of known materials deposited on the site for over 100 years, which Mr. Jenkins will present to you in detail. The application requirements identified by the staff in their 1028 memo said particularly concerned about the financial feasibility argument. What the code says is you have to show that you have the financial muscle to substantially get this done in four years. There was no evidence offered in 2015 agreed. They provided supplement this week showing that there is a fund in existence, but there's no explanation of what that fund is for, what claims are against it, what it's going to cost to do it, and if there are any other claims put against that funder, if it's going to be made available for this purpose. So just showing there was a fund available doesn't show that it's a fund that's going to be available for this purpose, sufficient to provide financial feasibility. The ownership changes are also important to look at in this application. The application has been through a series of ownership changes over the years. For example, Mr. Christiansen signed the application that you have in front of you, but Mr. Daniels represents himself as a managing member. And this has happened historically over time. There've been lots of changes in the people who are responsible for developing the property, and it seems to be in line with who's putting up the personal money at the time or the organizational money at the time. However, it's important to take a look at the ownership chain, and we would be providing evidence into the record showing that there have been a number of changes that may change the impression. For example, Real Vest is the current manager of Lower Bridge LLC. We haven't talked to Real Vest today. That there are a number of different people who are moving parts in this process. And there is a bankruptcy currently pending for members of the LLC that you have before you, which also affects feasibility. Regardless of how much money is sitting there, the claims against it are what make the difference.
Are you saying a bankruptcy of Lower Bridge LLC or a partner of that?
We will submit that. We will submit the details so you can look at it. It's difficult to describe in this kind of a format, and we'll provide the details in writing. The statewide, the statewide planning Goal 5 resource compatibility for the two adjacent surface lines, we have discussed briefly. We would like to provide more information to the record on that, showing how important it is, and that it can't just be glossed over. The floodplain land, which is approximately 30 acres, is being used to meet the three requirements that I described to you. It's, it's being used as open space in the floodplain, which isn't allowed. It's being given, it's being asked for credit for a density bonus, which isn't allowed because the floodplain isn't allowed to be used in this kind of open space. And it may be a de facto comprehensive plan amendment because of the changes that you're making to the policy if you allow this to occur. Anytime you tinker with designation such as floodplain land or resource land or Goal 5 resources, it has greater implications than were likely intended. And as Attorney Ramis said, you can make one decision and end up affecting a large panoply of other cases and policy across the board. The rimrock is not determined, so the setback is not assured. The lot size feasibility in light of the setbacks is in question, as Diane Lozito will review for you in detail. The site contamination concerns are not conclusively proven in terms of whether or not they've been cleaned up or not. And the DEQ letter that is before you expressly leaves in it an option to reopen if new information is provided. The land use history here is informative. Remember, the 2015 hearings officer decision denied approval. The 2015 appeal to the Board of County Commissioners was withdrawn after hearing, after records admittance, after everything, until the point that the Board said, "All right, we're ready to deliberate." Then they got the withdrawal. The 2019 hearings officer also denied the approval, and I think the applicant may have misrepresented to you what that hearings officer decision said. That decision said no. The same as the 2015 decision. They've both said no. And there is great credibility that deserves to be given to that. There are inherent problems with the site, and the proposed use in 2015 and 2019 is largely the same. The Friends of Lower Bridge will present separate issues to clarify the primary concerns before you today. David Jenkins, who sits beside me, will provide site history related to environmental contamination. Diane Lozito will give you site layouts considering setbacks and whether it's feasible to even approve this. Stephen Williams will talk to you about Goal 5 compliance, and Ed Beard will give you Goal 5 fish and wildlife analysis. They divided it up because we only all get five minutes. The rest we will provide to you in writing. We ask that the record be left open a minimum of seven days so that we may provide additional information into the record. Thank you.
I have some questions for you, but why don't we go ahead and finish, or have you, do your, and we'll ask questions of each of you if there's anything.
Sir, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
You have to say who you are for the recording.
My name is David Jenkins. I live with my wife, Diane Lozito, at the Eagle Rock EFU 20 subdivision due east of the proposed development. And over, we moved there in 94, and over the years- And over the years, I've accumulated 1,200 documents on this site by, some by being given to me by the government agencies, and a lot of which came from FOIA, Freedom of Information requests, from EPA, DEQ, BLM, and others. Okay? What I did was, I put all those documents in order in date of issuance, and they tell a story. And they tell a story of three lives. And the reason those three lives are important is because everything processed and/or dumped here does not biodegrade. And that's the point of the presentation. Here's the first life. Forgive me if I, while I read this, I can't memorize everything, so the first-
Are you saying three lives?
Yes, sir.
L-I-V-E-S?
Yes, three lives.
Three lives.
Like nine lives, but this one has three.
Okay.
Okay? Here's the first life. It was a diatomaceous earth mine. Diatomaceous earth at the site is composed of skeletal remains of tiny aquatic organisms. They accumulated here in an old freshwater lake bottom. DE is used for filtration, insulation, and passive insecticide. There was no real health issues with mining here from 1921 until 1936. Things changed. In 1936, Great Lakes Carbon Corporation bought the mine and operated there until 1963. This changed everything regarding health and safety, not only then for the workers, but now for the people that live in and around this mine site. As part of the war, post-World War II industrial push, chemical compounds were needed, like asbestos. DE was found to change at high temperatures into a similar substance with the same health Great Lakes Carbon Corporation installed two 60-foot-by-10-foot Gould furnaces and cooked diatomaceous earth in this, at this site, in the processing building, to 2,200 degrees Fahrenheit for the purpose of making filters. 2006, I took this photograph that shows one of the Gould furnaces in front of the building before it was torn down and the furnace was removed. Okay? Let's just put that right there.
When was the furnace removed?
I believe around 2007, but I don't know the exact date. I just know when I took the picture. This is a picture of the mine in full operation in 1954 by Great Lakes Carbon Corporation. They ran this picture in the Redmond High School yearbook to congratulate all the graduates of the school. I got this from the Redmond newspaper. So that's an aerial photo taken by Great Lakes Carbon Corporation. It shows you, here's the, here's the old mine buildings, here's the water tower, to give you a point of reference. So I'm going to leave all this stuff for you guys.
Where, so where's the river, then?
The river is back over here. Back over here. I don't, this, this photograph, this is as good as it gets, okay? It's from a report they issued on the site. So I've got some more. I've got other photos.
You hand it up here while you're talking, and we can look at it?
Okay.
What year is that photograph?
I believe it's 1954. The, the, the year is on the photo.
Can we just look at it? Thanks.
Should I pause a bit?
And are these going to be entered into the record? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir, all of them will be.
Okay, great.
Eight and a half elevens as well.
No, I think you can keep going. We'll just pass it.
Okay, okay, cool. The site was used so intensely that it used two-fifths of all electricity into Deschutes County at the time, and employed 100 men. It operated 24/7, three shifts. A process was used here to heat diatomaceous earth, like I said, to 220, 2,200 degrees Fahrenheit. No one knew at the time that this changed diatomaceous earth into something very dangerous, all right? Cristobalite. Under a microscope, cristobalite is tiny micro shards. For decades, cristobalite is now known worldwide as a group one carcinogen. When inhaled at low levels over time, it can cause fibrosis, lung cancer, and death. It was the number one product made and dumped at this site. Cristobalite particles made here are smaller than the diameter of a human hair. The smaller the particle, the more dangerous it is to inhale. The heating process reduced and hardened the particles to become extremely high in crystalline silica. The Terrebonne Plant Foreman showed in his detailed 1954 report, processed cooked waste was taken to the dump east of Deep Canyon with large trucks. When I say large trucks, they were GMC 25-ton trucks, okay? This is page 12 of Mr. Diersmid Report, and this is Deep Canyon back here. And he's saying the dump is back in this section.
But what is, I've saw a reference to East Canyon, but I don't know what that is.
It's Deep Canyon.
Oh, Deep Canyon, I mean, yeah.
It's, it's the western edge of the mine itself, and it's a canyon that runs through there with a, with a spring that feeds directly into the Deschutes River.
I see it when we were at the top view, it was back, and it was out that way.
Yeah.
Will, Will was trying to point it out, weren't you?
Right here, in his mechanical drawing, it says, "Great Lakes Carbon Corporation, Terrebonne Plant Flow Diagram." And he shows it going to the first, the two furnaces I showed you. And then it went through the process and dumped into a waste bin into the large dump truck shown here. This respirable waste does not biodegrade and has been left at the site, some of which may, may be blowing in the wind. The prevailing westerly winds blow eastward across the proposed development and points beyond. Today, in high winds, 25 to 65 miles an hour, a faint fog of uncontrolled airborne material can be seen emanating over the entire site. Okay? The applicant has not located this dump, identified the processed waste, and removed it from the site. The applicant has never conducted an EPA National Ambient Air Test in windy conditions to identify and measure dangerous respirable, respirable air pollutants dumped here every day for 27 years. We do not know what makes up the visible clouds of fog.
So it said the overburden was disposed of in Deep Canyon. And I, did, are you saying that the cristobalite is in the Deep Canyon?
No, sir, but I believe it's close to it based on the documents. Overburden, so you know, is, is, from my understanding, is a reference to topsoil that covered diatomaceous earth. On average, there was 20 feet of topsoil over this entire site that was removed from this site. If they put it in Deep Canyon, there wouldn't be a Deep Canyon. That's all I know. I don't know where the topsoil went. It doesn't say. Okay? I'm talking about the processed waste that went through the furnaces. Okay? The applicant has never conducted an EPA National Ambient Air Test, that's the official name of it, in windy conditions to identify and measure dangerous respirable air pollutants dumped here every day for 27 years. We do not know what makes up the visible clouds of fog. We do know what's been made, processed, and dumped at the site. And that's the first life of the mine, according to the documents. May I continue?
Yeah.
The second life of the mine was from 1966 until 1972. This entire site was leased from BLM by Deschutes County for the purpose of a public dump. Lower Bridge Number 12 Dump. It was free and unsupervised. 600 people used this site. It was, one could dispose of paint thinners, lead paints, asbestos, medical waste, spent industrial lubricants, and lead acid batteries. There were no rules. The waste was compacted and covered up with soil. There are many long-term health hazards and safety risks associated with old dumps. Methane gas presents fire and explosion hazards. Leachate liquid from buried soil waste. Health risks from excavation and contamination of groundwater. Let me take you through what I found. I was looking actually for something else one day about this mine site, and I came upon on Google News Archives, this old bulletin article. And it says right here, "Dump closures forced July 1st." Three of the sites are on land-
Actually says faced.
Sorry?
Dump closures faced July 1st.
Faced, I'm sorry. Faced, you're right. Sorry about that.
Okay.
July, July 1st. It says, "Three of the dump sites are on land owned by the county. These are the Cloverdale, North Redmond, Negus, and Tumalo Pits. Five are on land leased by the county from the Bureau of Land Management. Arnold Market Road, McGrath Road near Bend Airport, Lapine, Lower Bridge, and Alfalfa." So I started looking around, going like, well, is this the only little mention of, and what is it, what is that, what's, what's going on there? So I found a lot of articles about the Lower Bridge Dump. This one says, "Landfill replaces," it says, "The Lower Bridge Dump, 5 miles west of Terrebonne, will be closed November 1st." This one says, "County Voters Save Our Disposal Sites." Lower Bridge is in there, right here. One of the new modified landfills, or existing landfills, is the one which would eventually be upgraded to a sanitary landfill, would be the Redmond-Terrebonne area. A favored site is the old dicholite mine.
So these are all in the west parcel, I mean, your whole testimony, I'm just kind of acknowledging the big picture.
I'm going to get to that.
So-
I'm going to get to-
I'm just going to advocate that we may be in the timing issue here soon, so Commissioner Henderson's cheering it, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what to do about the time. So we've, we've used our 30 minutes, it sounds like, or close to that. We'd like you to finish, but maybe condense that. But yeah, Commissioner DeBong's asking, are all of these things you're talking about on the west property?
No.
Was this, like, for instance, this dump site, was that on the west property?
It was all, it was the whole site.
All side?
Yeah.
So maybe you can wrap up. You got two more, one more life after this, I think, so maybe that-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, your presentation has one more life.
Mr. Schimke says, "We don't have anything documented on where the former dumps are." I do. In the EPA book, right here, it lists all counties in Oregon, and Deschutes County has its own section. And on page 84 is the Lower Bridge Number 12 Public Open Dump with 600 people that use the site. Okay? Here's how much waste per person. Four and a half pounds per person, per day, all those years. I wrote BLM and made a Freedom of Information request, which is right here, about where the lots were at the Lower Bridge Dump that were, that were given the okay to use as a public dump. Five lots. 1501, 02, 09, 05, 500. Total, 563 acres. That's on the BLM map in the Freedom of Information Act report. All lots at the Lower Bridge Mine were Deschutes County Public Dump Number 12. 600 people, if you do their formula, 10 million tons. These are pictures that I had, I took myself in '06. Included in this, these pictures are waste from the 1960s, lubricant bottles that are no longer made. Okay? And I always wondered, those miners are pretty sloppy people. I wonder what those old cans and bottles are? Okay? It was the public. We are submitting all of these records. The applicant has not disclosed, located, or removed this waste from any part of the site.
But, but now you're saying about the, what you're showing us here, they've never removed this?
They don't even know it's there.
Well, it doesn't look like this now, does it? I mean, you wouldn't go out there and see these piles and-
It's covered up. The way they did the mines, the, the way they did public dumps is, they dug a hole and they covered it with topsoil. So the way you locate where it is, is ground penetrating radar more than likely because it's dangerous. Old dumps like this are the worst kind because there were no rules. They were unsupervised, okay? Those photographs are from the east and west sides. The third life of the mine from '75 to '83 was an illegal and abandoned hazardous waste site. 796 55-gallon drums of hazardous waste and 60,000 gallons of toxic sludge dumped into Lagoon 4. Illegal radioactive waste, cyanide, lead, PCBs, chromium, volatile organic compounds were all delivered. They were delivered before the soil was deemed safe by DEQ to receive any kind of waste, and deliveries continued after the polluters were asked to stop.
But what year was the third life?
'75 to '83.
Seven, '76 to '83. Here is the picture of the lagoon with all this stuff in it. Okay? In 1976, when the director of DEQ found out the waste was a threat to the Deschutes River, Deep Canyon Spring, the aquifer, and the groundwater, he quit his job and told no one. He told no one at Deschutes County of this safety danger, nor did his coworkers for eight years. In 1983, DEQ's Richard Ryder came in to DEQ and fired those people. Held a meeting and told the mine owners, that was Rameshneider, Nolan, and Wigan, and the polluters, the EPA could declare the site a superfund site, and they would be charged with criminal and civil penalties and held responsible for cleanup cost. Or they could do, opt to do a voluntary cleanup. DEQ stated they, the county had not been told of the waste, and they would try to keep it out of the press. So Precision Cast Parts then offered to clean up the hazardous waste. Some of the waste was taken to Arlington. But there has been no accounting for the radioactive waste, some of it gamma-level waste with a half-life of 4 billion years.
So are we about done now, or?
We are. We were, there were 106 barrels of radioactive waste DEQ reported sent to Hanford. I made a FOIA request. The letter says different. They never received it. The applicant has not disclosed the whereabouts of this dangerous waste and not shown it was delivered to Hanford. The applicant has not done deep core samples where hazardous sludge was dumped into a lagoon and loc, and nor located, inspected, and removed the buried lines that are still there that were used to pump toxins from the trucks into the lagoon. In order to know if the site is safe for development of a residential neighborhood, it, it must first be clean. In 1984, EPA superfund site manager Phil Wong directed DEQ to monitor the site and make provisions for oversight. This was never done. We are in a don't ask, don't tell territory here as it applies to the environmental cleanup. DEQ doesn't ask, and the applicant doesn't tell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We might ask a couple of questions, though, so, um-
Not going overboard.
Yeah, I need to have a question.
So, I have a couple of questions.
No, not specifically.
I'll start, then, I guess.
David, this is a small copy of what was submitted. David, this is a small copy of what was submitted.
So I want to ask a couple of questions about-
I didn't bring it up.
I don't know what this is. So a couple of things. Ms. Dixon, I have a couple of questions going back a little bit further from the dump site, et cetera. Is it, are there other land use cases where, I get the idea of clustering as part of a kind of efficient use of land where you cluster the homes together and leave open space elsewhere. Are there other properties in Deschutes County that you're aware of that have this many homes clustered together, 19, or what's the most you're aware of? And I guess this would be true for the applicant as well. That's a question I have about what's the, is there any limits to the amount of clustering that's allowed with the open space rule?
There are acreage limits, which Will might be able to discuss with you. I wouldn't want to opine on it without researching it. I looked at one called Parker Ranch. It was like back in '06, I think it was. And there were a number of them that are cluster developments. But the way that the open space usage is being, the floodplain as open space usage is being described, the cases that I looked at didn't describe it that way. They didn't show it that way. I didn't read it as a policy of the county. I read it as examples, as we know with land use, every case is different. It's hard to be uniform across the board. But the cluster development cases that I read, the decisions that you've made, were not analogous to this. I mean, if you wanted to boil it down to, was there open space and was there floodplain? Maybe.
Well, I get that more than that. I'm just, I mean, I understand we have to accept that to get to where the applicant wants to go. But I'm just wondering, clustering itself, are there limits to it?
Oh, yes.
If so, what, how many? And I mean, and I've only been involved in a couple of decisions while I've been here where we did do, you know, we allowed clustering or whatever you want to call it, so.
They are, they are an exception. That's what they are. They don't, we don't call them that like we do exception lands, but they're an exception to what would normally be allowed as a density in an area. And they're only allowed if you comply with these really stringent requirements. Because if you take a look at the site plan that you have in front of you, if you look at this site from the location of all the people around them, what you're going to see is a row of houses that are lined up like the Rocketts along that rimrock, all the way along, up the hairpin and down the end. That's what they'll see. And that, the open space that is being claimed is back behind where nobody can see it, and it's the wasteland that David's been describing to you. But the important thing to note is that some of the contaminated areas are in that lineup. And the idea of, well, we'll put the wasteland in the back and we won't use that, and we'll run the houses along the river, along the front, that's not what cluster was intended to do. Cluster was intended to be in there, like if you had a large tract of land, you put the homes together in a small group, and then you, like people who are into horses, right? And they would have horse fields around them on the outside so that they could enjoy the horses. That's the kind of use that was intended. There's one up in the Camp Sherman area that's similar. It was the same thing. They cluster the homes close together, and the idea is that you'll use the open space for another purpose. That's not what you have here. What you have here is keep the houses away from the worst wasteland and dump site. And what you're looking at in this case is you're looking at land that is, that they're trying to optimize the river access. And in doing so, they're violating your habitat issues and your scenic waterway issues and everything else that we're concerned about on the site from an environmental standpoint.
So we can't go too long on this. So a second question I had for you was, you made the comment that it doesn't protect the resource land. What resource land are you talking about?
Well, we have a number of Gold 5 resources that are in this area. And there's the resource of the river itself, there's the resource of the floodplain land, there's the resource of all the other lands. If you take a look at your roster, you will see this area is full of identified resource areas. They're not on the site.
Talking about the river and the area along the river.
And there's also the mining, which is also a Gold 5 resource.
Nobody seems to want to do the mining anymore, so.
Well, but that doesn't change the fact that the law says that it's on the books and it gets priority.
But this had been changed, though, from, it was no longer, anyway, I guess we can hear about that. So I guess my question about we're not, they're not, this development's not protecting the resource land, but what would, I mean, if they had people using the other side, currently there's a trail on the east side of the river that wraps around there, and we were there, there were fishermen there. I mean, that's well-used, so the only, how would it be any different than that? It's just now there would be right for people to be on the west side of the river. Why is it any more damaging or less, any less protective of resource land than what's currently going on with all the use of the river?
It's the density. The applicant has not shown you where each one of the houses would be, where they would have to be, in light of where the septic would go and where the well would go and all that. They intentionally don't do that.
But don't you, I mean, so I heard that argument, you kind of made that comment about, well, the, you know, we don't know about the septic and the wells. Well, to get the house on there, they got to figure that out, so. And these, it looks like about half of each of these lots is on flat ground. From when we were up there, we could see the, where the contras went over. So half, you know, an acre, half acre to an acre usually is large enough for a septic and a well. I mean, so they're not gonna, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you're making the argument, but we have to know where the houses are going to be. They'll probably be somewhere on these lots. I mean, wouldn't that be practically what's going to happen?
Diane Lizito will discuss with you in detail what the setbacks are and how they impact each property. The topography is not what you see here. In the 2015 application, the topography lines were much more clearly delineated, and in the recent application you have in front of you, they left all those topography lines out or made them less clear to see. We will submit into the record the 2015 DiAgostino-Wallace map that shows where the topography lines are, and some of these parcels aren't even a third flat. They're very heavily graded up because they're allowing those property lines to go very down close to the river, down the side.
And then one other question I had, I guess was from Mr. Jenkins. I mean, we hear what you're saying and understand, I think, the three lives of the property, et cetera. I'm just kind of curious, would, do you have some better use for this land than, I mean, who else is going to clean this up, I guess, than somebody that can do a development or do something like this? I mean, and understanding that, because there's lots of these kind of parcels around, or others of these parcels in Deschutes County, and people do clean them up. What, did you have some other idea what should happen with this land, I guess?
If I could intervene, there is no other site that I'm aware of in Deschutes County that's been offered superfund status. I'm not aware of any other.
Offered?
That's been offered by DEQ to be made a superfund site. I'm not aware of any others.
My hopes are that these health issues are addressed and made good. That's my hope. Certainly not against development, but putting people in the middle of this, I'm totally against that. It keeps me awake at night. That's why I looked up all this stuff. You know, I've got better things to do than look up all this stuff. But when I don't get complete information from state authorities, that just gets me going. Because I want it made right, and it takes a lot to make this right. I would suggest an independent environmental assessment, which we've done in the past on this site, which is wildly different than what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Commissioner DeBones?
No questions.
Commissioner, there are questions?
Um, Mr. Jenkins, are you, excuse me, are you an attorney?
No, ma'am. I'm a former advertising person. I just dressed up today.
Okay, well, I was, they did talk. I just was curious if you were an attorney or not.
No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want that hell, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, an investigative reporter.
Yeah, I think I'll, Will?
I was just, this is the time we had designated for agency personnel. I just-
Well, I think I was gonna have one other attorney.
Please.
What's that? Do you want to come up and, yeah, and come up and talk for your five minutes? I guess get the attorneys out of the way first, is that all right?
And Mr. Jenkins.
And Ms. Jenkins. I guess I was in impression that Mr. Jenkins was an attorney while also he dressed up, so, yeah, so.
Well, thank you for that opportunity, Chair. Hi, my name is Carol Macbeth, and I'm a staff attorney for Central Oregon Land Watch. I'd like to echo Mr. Ramis's policy implications for this particular application. We are providing some legal arguments in addition to those we made to the hearing officer. But on a policy perspective, you may wonder, why does everyone keep talking about this strip of wetlands and riparian area next to the Deschutes River on this site? Why is it so important that we protected the floodplain zone with an 80-acre minimum lot size and that that lot size be protected? Well, you think about it, Oregon has a slogan, "Things look different here." You've heard that. Deschutes County, things look really, really different here. We are among the top two counties in the state. Out of 36 counties, only Lincoln County has as much as we do in income from wildlife viewing every year. We get $70 million, according to ODFW, into our economy annually, $70 million from wildlife viewing. And why do we have such great wildlife here? It's because over the years, Deschutes County has accumulated more and more environmental wildlife protections, which you can see in Chapter 5 of your comprehensive plan where it says miscellaneous sections. All of these ordinances from the 90s and the 80s are protecting riparian areas, wetlands, fish, wildlife, there's some mining provisions in there. But altogether, what they've done is made a balance between individual property owners and our wildlife. Because wildlife is what brings people here as tourists and what brings them here to retire, which is the source of most of our income. If you drive down Mount Washington Drive here in Deschutes County, you can see elk. And people can't see that in other counties. You can, if you go down to the footbridge in Mirror Pond and you sit really quietly, you can see mink diving among the reeds there in Mirror Pond. You can see great blue herons just a little bit upstream. The reason we have done that is because we have these protections in place. One of them is the 80-acre minimum lot size, and it has to be enforced. In the Deschutes County Code, it's 18.96.100, the purpose of the floodplain zone, it says it's not just to protect the public from hazards. It's also to conserve wildlife resources and fish resources and scenic views. And it says it balances the public interest with those of individual property owners. So the code that has this 80-acre minimum, that's already a balance. When it was written, it was written to balance the public and individuals. So if we now double-count it, it's like we're overbalancing for individuals, but that balance has already been struck. We're not saying that there's no development in floodplain zones or riparian areas. We're saying 80-acre minimum lot size. And so that when we have riparian areas, we have to see them enforced. If you think about Monoma County, which has its own floodplain regulations, which are quite different from ours, or Lane County or Washington County, those are some pretty wet counties. If you go over there, you can't, you can see wetlands everywhere. There are riparian areas everywhere. They have the Columbia, the Walamette, the Tuolotin, all of these different rivers flowing, and all of them are bordered by floodplains, bordered by riparian areas. We're the exact opposite. You can't find very many areas that look like this. If you try and think in your mind's eye, where have I seen wetlands like these? You won't think of any because as the river goes further and further down, cuts deeper and deeper into the canyon, there are fewer and fewer wetlands. We just don't have very many riparian areas. But their outsized importance is for wildlife. That all the wildlife in the county depend at some point on these areas, at some point of their life cycle. So that's why they're there, is that we have lots of wildlife, which is important to our economy, and very few riparian areas. So we need a different type of floodplain zone, different types of protections than other counties that don't have as many wildlife but have tons of riparian areas. Does that make sense? We're in the high desert. As you move west, I mean, east of the Cascades, it gets drier and drier. There are fewer and fewer wetland areas. Across the arid intermountain west, this is the rarest ecosystem type that there is. So that's why so many people are here, and so many people have appeared throughout these proceedings, to say, hey, this area has to be protected the way it was designed to be protected. And in the larger perspective, the floodplain zone should be kept the way it is with an 80-acre minimum lot size, because that is the way that we've managed to keep this balance. You can see elk, you can see mink, you can see heron as you drive around, which is why people come here. That is part of our quality of life, and it's part of our economy. So we just wanted to point out those policy implications and just the number of wildlife, the different birds, you can just imagine what's dependent on these areas. And we ask you to take that carefully into consideration as you make your decision about this application. We've provided some written materials, which I will hand to your staff. Thank you.
So, Ms. Macbeth, one challenge that I have from this, yeah, go ahead if you'd like, is we got a map produced by, I guess, our staff. We were interested to know how the rest of the river looks. And if you go upriver from this area, there's quite a few smaller lots right along the river, and some of them have houses and some don't. So one of the struggles I really have is why would this property not be entitled to some houses or maybe, say, 19 houses when other parcels along the river that obviously don't have 80-acre parcels there? And so, and they're right on the river, and they have houses, and it just seems like, I don't know, do you have any thought about that?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. That's an interesting point. I think what I would say is the exact opposite, that the county has identified, when it went through its Gold 5, you know, you do that balancing test, that EC analysis, and you say, oh, what are the conflicting uses for a riparian area? It's not just riparian areas, it's a conflicting use for a mink, for otter, for beavers, for, you know, you name it, great blue herons. And the conflicting uses are residential uses, right? So when those houses were allowed, that was the introduction of a conflicting use into some of the riparian areas. That's an argument to keep intact, the riparian areas we still have that don't have houses in them. And it's not that we're not allowing houses. There will be houses in this development, and we're in favor of there being a balance between development and protection. It's just that not as many houses as they are asking for can be had because we have to count the open space separately from the riparian area.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. So Will, do you want to, now we're to that government. You said, at this time, we have agency comments.
Yes, at this time, to the extent we've got agency personnel who would like to make themselves available for testimony or for questions on behalf of the commission, we'd appreciate them raising their hand and coming on up.
Here you are, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bob Schwartz. I'm with the Oregon DEQ based in the Dalles. So if you'd like, I can just summarize our decision for the 113-acre, no further action determination. So this is primarily, as we've said today, on the east side of Lower Bridge Road. We evaluate environmental risk in terms of contaminant concentrations and the potential for people and animals to be exposed to them. In the case of this 113 acres, the data that we used, we evaluated what sorts of investigation needs to be done based on a couple of things. One, the file, which is extensive for this site. Number two, site walks, which the person who had my job before me, who is now my boss, you know, inspected the site several times, as did I. And in particular, in the file, we evaluated, as we often do, appropriate types of monitoring based on the 2007 environmental site assessment, Phase 1 environmental site assessment that was prepared by PBS. And based on that, we worked with the Wallace Group on developing a work plan, which consisted of air monitoring at three locations, groundwater testing at two wells. The benefit of putting deep wells into a site for development is we get to get a good look at the groundwater quality as the wells are being drilled. Yes, sir?
Oh, you mentioned the air monitoring and the terminology used previously by Mr. Jenkins. Can you equate those together? He made a statement that air monitoring hadn't been done or air testing, air quality testing?
Yes, well, I believe testing during very dusty, windy conditions associated with- Yes, well, I believe testing during very dusty windy conditions associated with diatomaceous earth on the west side of the property, that was not part of this investigation. The Wallace Group did air testing during their site investigation on the east side, and that's the data that we looked at for the purpose of this no further action determination. And the contaminant concentrations in the air were very low compared to what are regarded as safe levels. And then, so the groundwater testing, the air testing, and soil testing at locations identified in the 2007 environmental site assessment. There were four locations identified in that 2007 report. The Wallace Group looked at the four. They couldn't find one of them, which was back in 2007, a dilapidated scale house. But they did find areas where there was the potential for petroleum contaminated soil and soil containing asbestos. And as a result of that investigation, they removed and sent to a landfill, a permitted landfill, about a ton of petroleum contaminated soil and about 75 tons of asbestos containing material. Then they did what we generally require, which is confirmation testing. After you excavate the bad stuff, you test to make sure that you got it all. And those soil test results indicated that they had. The groundwater data in both the upper and the lower aquifer was very good. We didn't see any contaminants of concern relative to the hazardous substances that were authorized to regulate. So based on the air, the soil, and the water testing for the 113 acres and the 29 acres on the west side, that was the basis, as described in this August 10, 2017 staff report that I prepared and I believe you've seen. That was the basis for our decision to issue the no further action letter.
Just to repeat, you said 75 tons of asbestos was removed?
75 tons of material containing asbestos. It's not pure asbestos.
Okay, and then one ton of petroleum?
About 1,600 pounds of soil with petroleum contamination at levels above what we allow.
So I guess you're our expert, one of our experts on this issue of pollution and material, you know, the three lives of the mine, et cetera. I guess it's hard to not hear all that and not be concerned. It sounds like, though, you aren't concerned about the eastern property having further, I'll come say it, pollution or hazardous material problems.
I'm not concerned, based on what I've reviewed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
So, yeah. Further agency or comments? Yeah, come on up.
Members of the commission, my name is Corey Heath. I'm the district wildlife biologist for the Department of Fish and Wildlife, based here in Bend. With me is Andrew Walsh. He's a habitat biologist, also for the Department of Fish and Wildlife, based here in Bend. Basically, we're just here to clarify a couple of things. A letter that we wrote to the county on July 12 of 2019 regarding this project, and then also to answer any questions that you might have, wildlife related. So we wrote a letter regarding this project, addressing three main impacts to wildlife in this area. One was mule deer winter range, one was the riparian area management plan, the ramp, and one was the rim habitat in the area. That's what our letter addressed, our letter and our comments at the time we wrote them. We know that, we know and we knew that this is not in Goal Five inventoried habitat. We were invited by the county to submit comments on the ramp and on the application, which is why we did so. We, as an agency, are not regulatory in nature in most cases relative to habitat. We're advisory. You know, we advise the county on potential wildlife impacts. We advise Forest Service, BLM, you know, cities, you know, entities like that. You folks are the decision-making body. So our comments that we submitted were consistent with our habitat mitigation policy, which is in OAR. It is a state law. Our comments were consistent with those. So our comments, even though this area and other areas in Deschutes County are not in an inventoried Goal Five overlay, that doesn't mean there are no impacts to wildlife. There are impacts to wildlife in many cases. So, and that's what we were trying to point out in that, in this letter. We view it as providing you folks information. You need information to make, you know, informed decisions, and that was the intent of what we're trying to do. Give you folks information to determine what the impacts are, you know, the trade-offs, the pros and cons of doing whatever you're proposing to approve or not approve. So anything you want to add?
No, that sums it up pretty well.
So, you know. Go ahead and summarize your, because we have your letter, but I.
It caused a lot of discussion. We understand.
I don't think we've all.
Previous meeting.
Yeah, read. Trying to find what, yeah, why don't you go ahead and?
Okay, so our letter, like I said, you know, addressed three, three primary impacts. One was to mule deer winter range. This is biological mule deer winter range. It's not Goal Five winter range, but it is biological winter range and identified by the department as such. It will have impacts. This is in good winter range. We do population estimation surveys in this area. In the past, more frequent. We do a rotation process. Now, we do it every three years. We do inventories every year, but we do a good population estimation every three years in this area. This development borders on two of our highest density mule deer wintering subunits that we have in the Matolius Wildlife Management Unit, which is where this is located. That population has declined by 40% in the last three years. So there's a lot of stuff going on out there that is impacting mule deer populations. It is not in moving on to the rim habitat. Any golden eagles are the primary concern, bat roosting, golden eagle nesting, things like that. This is not in a golden eagle nest territory. But when a site is developed, it pretty much precludes any future nesting, roosting-type activity, you know, from those rim habitats providing for those species. The riparian area management plan. Andrew did speak with the developers consultant on, I believe, one phone call to discuss that. Some of our considerations were taken into account, some were not. But anytime that you have activity in a riparian area or any wildlife habitat, it is going to have impacts. So in a nutshell, that kind of summarizes our letter. You know, our last, or one of our last paragraphs here, you know, according to Deschutes County Code, 18128210, environmental impacts resulting from a planned development must be considered. In the applicant's 2019 burden of proof, they state that the environmental impact from the development of the proposed PUD will likely involve the removal of some vegetation for structures and a new road. That's it. You know, that was the only statement made. So, you know, from our perspective, from a wildlife standpoint, impacts are much greater than removal of some vegetation for a road and building, so.
You know, when we were out there, I was, you know, I was kind of surprised, actually, how little there is on this land. I mean, it's, I mean, I wouldn't imagine a lot of deer up there. Maybe there are. I didn't see any tracks, but, because it's kind of just not a gravel pit, but a sand, kind of a sand pit up on top there. Did you think the, so did you make comment? I think I've found where they are in the record, so we can look at those letters. Did you feel like the riparian, what's it, ramp area management plan was well thought out and was a good plan? I mean, was that presented to you?
Yeah, Chair Henderson, there are elements that were good. You know, the struggle we have is the riparian plan is providing protections, but the development itself is inherently, you know, increasing use of the river on that side. So it's hard to offset that.
Yeah.
From a overall, you know, no net loss to wildlife perspective.
Quite a bit of that land, though, or lots, it's kind of difficult access down to the river. Some have easier access, but I guess that would have to be worked out.
The slope is quite steep on some of it. What is it? Yes.
It is, but the ramp, correct me if I'm wrong, refers to trails, bike trails and stuff, accessing, you know, the riparian area, you know, along that side of the river. And trails, you know, accessing from the housing up on top down into, you know, a nature path along the river. So inherently, you're going to have folks, you know, walking their dogs and everything else down there, because now there's, you know, 19 units up above. That was kind of our thoughts about the ramp.
Does anyone have a count, though, of how many people use that park? Because when I drive by it, there are usually vehicles at that park, you know, on the other side of the river. I mean, it's, you know, it's a somewhat used park. Very, it's not that huge. Not that many cars can fit in it, but still, it seems like there's a lot of activity there for the other side.
Yeah, yeah, and it is a popular little wildlife preserve there. Still, you know, and I was kind of referenced before, but any more increased use is still a compounding effect.
And then the fact, what you said about the mule deer population has gone down, what? You said 40% in the last three years?
Yeah, Commissioner Dara, that is correct. You know, we have good population estimates. We did a good estimate in 2016, and then again, spring of 2019. And in the Matolius Management Unit, they have declined by 40% in the last three years.
So, I know it's not real.
Four zero, yeah.
Yes, but do you have anything to attribute that to?
Yep, we do. And, you know, we, you know, everybody wants to point to one thing, you know, it's this or this or this or this. It's not. You know, it's a combination of a lot of different factors. Predation, disease, loss of habitat, accidents, poaching, roadkill, you know, it's everything. It's everything upon the landscape that's impacting mule deer, in this case, and wildlife in general, you know. And a lot of them are human-related type impacts. Some of them are not, but, you know, none of them are good for the mule deer population.
Okay.
You know, the other, I've been there 30 years, and we've also had two of the worst winters in 30 years in the last three years, too. So that's, it's got to kill some deer, so.
No question, Commissioner Henderson. You are correct. We've had hard winters in the last three years. We've surveyed deer post-winters in each of those years. Undoubtedly, there was winter impact to the deer herd. The deer that came out of those winters, though, however, appeared to be in good shape. Our fawn ratios were still similar to what we've had in prior milder winters. So, you know, it wasn't catastrophic. That in itself wasn't catastrophic to the deer herds.
Any questions?
No other questions.
Thanks for your help. We'll look at your, watch us enter the record.
Thank you.
So any other representative of agencies here? Okay, so that would lead us to the next item would be testimony by individuals. We've been here about two and a half hours. May I take a seven-minute break and reconvene at 3:30? People chance to stretch and. And get the rest of this. Yeah, I just went and said hello to him. And keep going here, so you can finish this this afternoon. So if everyone can sit down and. So that's our, well, that's our eye doctor. So he's fine, it's fine, too. He wrote, he lives out there. I was reading through the stuff last night. Okay. Okay. So we'll reconvene. This will be the portion where we have testimony from citizens. I think we'd agreed to, was it five minutes for your testimony, which is actually two minutes longer than normal for these hearings, but there's a lot of issues. But I think we'll be able to get through everybody before 5 o'clock. We may ask questions, as we have along the way, or we may not. So I just do this in the order that I got them. So the first one to testify will be, what was it, Diane Lizzito? Yeah, what's that? And then you'll be followed by Steve Williams, Stephen Williams. If you want, when you're here, we've got a map over there that'll provide that we could point out where you live. What's that? Yeah, I think it's the other map, the one, the picture by us. Yeah, and maybe you could. We actually, I think, know where he lived, because we were out at the Beard residence, and I think it was kind of pointed out to us. But for other people, I think there's a lot of, we won't know, but we kind of, your particular house was pointed out, I think. But anyway.
Do I have to push this or no? It's on, okay, thank you.
It's on, yeah.
Hello, Commissioners and Senior Planner Will Gross. Nice to see y'all. I'm here today as a Realtor. I've been a Realtor for over 30 years. I specialize in farm and ranch and rural properties. And I've owned a lot, I'll put out in a minute, I've owned property at Lower Bridge for 28 years now. And so I'm very familiar, I'm one of the top-selling Realtors in that area, so I've sold a lot of the ranches and homes, both at the RR10 Lower Bridge Estates and the farms around it. So I want to speak about, is that part of my five minutes to point out where I live?
Well, you.
I live on that curve. I have 27 acres. It's horse property. You can't see. It's very private, heavily treed, a mile-long driveway, nothing like it. It has a smaller lot, and his house is built further back, because he's not riverfrontage. He has the park in front of him. So what you saw is not indicative of the rest of the subdivision. Our subdivision is 222 acres. It's called Eagle Rock Estates. It was a cattle ranch. When I first walked it, you made sure you wore your oldest boots. There was cow pies everywhere and bullets and rusty cans. And so from cattle ranch, it was divided into nine lots. Average size of those lots are 25 acres. So the density change here would be pretty dramatic, because we're 25 acres, and before you reach our subdivision that's on that curve, you drive three miles, and both sides of that road is BLM EFU land. So it's predominantly EFU for 14 miles. So from '97, you drive past a little bit of MUA10, multi-use agricultural, but mostly exclusive farm use properties. So for the 14 miles, you'll finally get, right before the mine site on your right, is over 4,000 acres of EFU open space BLM land. And then you will get to the Bornbeck Wildlife Preserve. That's 30 acres. It's 26 acres, unless they have some strips on the west side, one of which is 2.45 acres that the applicant is using in her floodplain acreage, but it actually belongs to Oregon Parks and Rec Department. And then we have Big Falls Ranch. Rex Barber's here tonight. He owns this beautiful hay farm and ranch down that abuts the property from the rear, and Rex's ranch is 1,750 acres. Then, these are all around the subject property. Then across from the subject property is, and it abuts the west side section, is Doug Dunn's Double Eagle Ranch. That's 417 acres. And then by the back gate of the mine site is Bullwood Farms. That's 368 acres. So we're as high as 4,000 hundreds of acres. So to see suddenly on this 14 acres of pure. So to see suddenly on this fourteen acres of pure EFU land, a cluster development to me is poor planning. But more importantly, the lots that they've shown are not feasible. And so I'll show you why in a minute. So the surrounding use.
Quickly, you said it's EFU land. Is that the current zoning of the?
The whole fourteen miles is probably ninety percent exclusive farm use zone properties.
Oh.
Exclusive farm use. And then if you went up Teeter, which is not along Lower Bridge Road, that's the only RR-ten, and that's a true RR-ten, by the way. The, the closest lot to the mine site in that RR-ten is twelve point one eight acres. It's over twelve acres. It's been on the market for three years. It can't sell because the buyers that I show property up there say, I don't want to see that dusty mine site. And then the house across from it's been on the market five years. It won't sell because they don't want to see that dusty white mine site. So not a very marketable area there, real estate wise. But back to the septic feasibility maps. I wanted to hand out some maps for you to. As a Realtor, when I show bare land, I don't want to get sued. So I tell my clients to look at the setbacks. I can't find all the setbacks in the file. For twelve years, it's never been disclosed. Half of the setbacks that I'm going to share with you. Oh, God, I was out of time. Darn. Okay, so map A, if you look very closely, please look at the top of that whole peninsula. And then if you jump to map B, you see that topo map how, when you go above the contours where one would really get septic approval and be able to build, that's a pretty skinny area to have five or six lots in that top section. And then I love Scott Wallace's map, which is map C. He did this map in twenty-fourteen. His map actually shows, when you go above the contour lines, you could see lots two to ten, very small acreage left over. These are average two acre lots. So going back to A, please look at lot five and tell me what to do. They are showing a lot that's a hundred and two feet deep. Then I look at pretty much lots three to ten, especially five, seven, eight, nine, thirteen, and eighteen. Eighteen is a hundred and eighteen deep, but it's the widest point. And when I look at all that, how do you fit the setbacks? So you need a fifty-foot rimrock setback. And they need to prove where the rimrock is. I would require, if I were you, a study of where the rimrock is. And if there is no rimrock, a twenty-foot setback from the front lot line. Then you need to go for space for the home. You need a building envelope. Typically, it's fifty feet for a four thousand square foot home, as they've put into the file. That would be a home, a garage. And when I show property on rural property, they all have a boat. They all have a third car. They all want to shop. So you need four thousand square foot house, two to three car garage, and a shop on the building envelope footprint, which I don't find anywhere. So I won't even bother putting up my map because it's, it's their map because it's kind of a joke. It shows nothing. So the other, nothing that it doesn't show is besides the fifty-foot rimback, rimrock, fifty-foot for the home, this is in depth. All to fit on that hundred and two foot lot. You need a hundred feet from the septic to the well. You need fifty feet from the well to the septic. You need thirteen feet times two tanks for an ATT system, which I'll get to next, which is required on rocky soil because it'd most likely be an ATT system if it passed the septic at all out there. You need to perk. To perk, you need at least a foot of topsoil. There is not a foot of topsoil. It is one dusty gravel pit. So it's going to be a septic nightmare. That's why all nineteen lots should be given septic feasibility, not only showing that septic will pass on each lot. So when they buy those lots, they're not approving that property, you all know. They're selling the dirt.
Yeah, some of that's the next step. I mean, you are getting to the specifics.
But the next step is, do you want to put in twelve thousand more? Twelve years of this, you're going to put in all these extra county hours to find out it's, it's not feasible to build there? Why wait? Why can't I tell you now?
I was just acknowledging.
Okay.
Going way down the path of.
No, it's not way down the path. This is what prevents lawsuits, is for people to know upfront before they buy the land, before you get to the final plat. Why waste time if it won't fit? It has to fit for cluster development. There's no more room. They're about to lose thirty acres to the floodplain unless you all push it through. And it's very tight. They need those nineteen lots to go through, but they can't. And then Pat, they put a seventy-five foot drain field, I think, on one of their drawings. It's three hundred feet on all the surrounding. It's three hundred feet on all the surrounding lots in the area, not seventy-five feet. So it's three hundred foot drain fields in the immediate area. Every, every lot that I pulled up shows that, including mine. And then the twenty-foot lot line. So if you add up, this is, I'm almost up to four hundred feet here in setbacks. How do you fit that on a hundred and two foot deep lot? Thank you very much.
You, great job, yeah.
Okay. Just real quick, we're, all that of what you were talking about, was that on one of the maps that you were referring to the distances or?
That's the problem. Thank you so much for asking. So I have.
I wasn't trying to extend it, I'm just saying.
Oh, I know, okay, to answer you, no, it's not. I'm a taxpayer. I paid eleven thousand dollars yesterday for my tax bill. So I would love for the county to work for us and demand, you guys, Will, let's see that. I want to see a map that shows this stuff.
No, I'm not, yeah.
Oh, so that wasn't your question?
Nope.
No, it's not on any of the maps. No, it's not, but I would love for it to be on.
Next is Stephen Williams and then Ed Beard. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, I'm Stephen Williams. I live at eight, seven, nine, zero Northwest Teeter Avenue, which is about a mile from the, the mine site. I'm not going to point it out to you. I think you, you probably know where Teeter Road is.
We drop off it.
Yeah, good. Been there for five and a half years, very familiar with this project. And, you know, from, from my lens, okay, I think this application should be denied, and I'll tell you why. Existing code states that floodplain zone property cannot be used for development. Okay? The board's year two thousand plan amendment didn't include any changes in the floodplain. Therefore, acreage in the floodplain remains zoned as floodplain acreage. Basically, what you get down to is you can't build in the floodplain. Very simple, can't do it. The applicant, in this case, wants to change property lines in a way to gain additional lots, four additional lots, through this density bonus scheme using floodplain property. Can't do that. Lots that were supposed to be ten acres are now seven point five acres. And the east side is zoned for ten acres. In two thousand fifteen, hearing Officer Green said that you can't use the floodplain acreage in the density calculation. This decision has not been appealed, hasn't been overturned, and it is binding. I know there's been a lot of discussion about floodplain zones and overlays and things of that nature. And I'm hopeful, at the end of all of that, that the board will come up with some type of common sense approach regarding floodplain acreage. It's pretty simple. If you can't build in the floodplain, you shouldn't be able to use it in the calculation. If you want to use a floodplain acreage in the density calculation, you're basically changing its zoning from floodplain to residential resource. And that should trigger an E S E E action. Okay? That analysis is basically a risk analysis. And with that, it would take you through and look at a couple of things. Primarily, it would help, I think, the board and everyone to kind of quantify the economic value and viability of this project, which I think is under a lot of scrutiny right now. You know, Commissioner Henderson, you mentioned a couple of times that you went out, when you went out, that you were a little bit surprised about the sand and the roughness of the property.
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah, okay, so two thousand eight. Remediation should have probably started. This is two thousand nineteen. And when you think about that, do you really believe that there's been eleven years of effort to clean up and remediate that area? I don't. And I'd have to tell you, three million dollars of spend over eleven years for this is a drop in the bucket. If you go through the assessment, you'll also take a look at the social impact of this project. And I'd have to tell you, when you do that, I hope you factor into, to that analysis, the health and wellness of people that are going to actually reside on property that used to be a toxic mine site. People are going to be, children are going to be there, infants, women who are going to probably have babies out there. These people are all very susceptible to a lot of tox, toxic waste. And I think that their health would be put in, in danger. The analysis will also help you identify some conflicting uses for this property. And when I talk about that, you've got a development of about nineteen lots on the middle deschutes, overlooking the middle deschutes. And I think what we do is risk wild and scenic corridor on the middle deschutes river. I'm not sure that that's going to, to, to be in harmony with the, with the environment there. And finally, and finally, probably one of the most important is the environmental impact of this. I think that we all should understand that in the summer and during irrigation system season, the middle deschutes river undergoes a dramatic change. Water flow slows, water levels drop, water temperature increases, dissolved oxygen decreases, and the fish that are in the river are stressed. What else happens during the summer as construction season? So now you've got a stressed environmental situation in the middle deschutes. And above it, you have a huge construction project ongoing. Prevailing winds are going to take all of the debris, dust, and trash and put it right into the middle deschutes river. And you're going to exacerbate an already stressed environmental situation. This project is skewed towards risk for everyone except the applicant. And I would tell you, in eleven years, I have not seen a lot of effort from the applicant to execute anything as far as remediation on the property. In conclusion, floodplain acreage can't be used as part of the P U D calculation. Lots must be ten acres, not seven point five. The site plan before you violates code, and the application should be denied.
I have a question. You, you thought you were a resident for five and a half years?
Five and a half years.
But you're quoting ten years, eleven years?
Ah, yeah, because the, the board approved the plan in two thousand and eight.
Okay, but that isn't your first ten. Did you live in that area at that time?
No, I've lived in Memphis, Tennessee, retired here to enjoy.
Okay, five and a half years ago.
Yeah, five and a half years ago.
All right, thank you.
Good. Any other questions?
Just for the record, I, when I was commenting on the site, I wasn't really commenting at all about cleanup or non-cleanup. I was just, I didn't know what to expect, and I was just commenting on that, so. Don't read, don't read too much into it, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Ed Beard and then John Breen.
I have some maps of property I'd like to get to.
Great. Mr. Beard was willing to let us come to his house the other day and look at, look at the view from there. So thank you.
I'm sorry I didn't make enough copies for everyone.
I'll share.
My name's Ed Beard. I'd like to talk about the wildlife. I've lived on the river rim there for twenty-four years, and I think I've probably had more wildlife observations of that section of the river than anybody. So the applicant has told us that their riparianary management plan and landscape management will provide the necessary protections for the wildlife and, and meet the goal five objectives. But I disagree, and, and so do the experts. I'd originally planned on, on quoting ODFW, but since they've already testified and you have their letter, I'm not going to cover all of that. But what they have said is that, you know, the increased land division, development, and human presence have permanent environmental impacts and cumulatively lead to loss of wildlife habitat, migration corridors, and reduced wildlife populations. So they've classified this, the rim and the riparian area here as category two, which is defined as essential and limited. To me, that basically says it's irreplaceable. Their specific concerns about the project where the, you know, the mule deer winter range, the habitat in the riparian corridor, and the, the nesting habitat. The way I see it is that, you know, it really can't, if you put those houses in there, it's not going to be protected or mitigated, and it can't be replaced. In fact, as part of the development, they plan on putting new trails across the riparian area into the river. So essentially, you're going to be opening up both sides of the river to human activity. And I think once that happens, there's no longer any safe habitat area in that riparian area because you're going to have people on both sides down there. And I think that's going to drive the, the animals away. So let's look at some of the wildlife. If you look at the map there, this is, in fact, mule deer winter range, as I can attest, having lived there. And throughout this whole riparian area, the does nest and give birth through there every year. And we see the speckled fawns come out in the spring. It's quite enjoyable to watch. The bald eagles, osprey, and the blue herons, they are all active fishers in the area below my house there. It's pretty amazing to watch them catch and eat fish. There are, if you look at the Xs on there, those are telephone poles. And the golden eagles, hawks, falcons, and turkey vultures actually like to sit and perch on those telephone poles from, it gives them a good hunting vantage point. I, I assume they're going after rabbits or something out there on the subject property. But the, the golden eagles and the hawks and falcons, they do visit this area on a fairly regular basis. The circles there along the river, those circles are large rock outcroppings that provide nesting habitat for the birds. Currently, I've, I've only seen the geese actually nest on those rocks. But I've actually watched the goslings hatch in the spring and make their way down to the river. And then throughout this whole riparian area here, the beaver and the mink are very active. And if you look over on the east side there, you'll see those two little square boxes. Those are the two homes that are existing on that side of the river. And, and again, you know, we're EFU twenty. So there's only going to be those two houses on that other side of the river. So in my mind, throughout this whole process, I've, I hear what I call a lot of happy talk from the applicant, where all the problems are minimized or they're pushed out into the future. An example is their project engineer, Dagostino, for the lot grading and future home construction activities, says, "All the proposed lots are of ample size and include very mild topography, such that future home construction on each lot can be accomplished with minimal grading and disturbance of land." I just don't think that's correct. When I look over at that peninsula, I see an area that's been heavily excavated and kind of hollowed out. And I think in large areas of the. and kinda hollowed out, and I think in large areas of the rim is actually higher than the land inside. And I don't see how you could, um, develop that for home sites without degrading that rim. And once that happens, it's just gravity and weather are going to migrate those disturbed soils down slope into the riparian area and, uh, into the river. So in my, my mind, I see that this development, you know, we can have the biologists go in and do an audit every couple of years, and to me, they're just gonna come back eventually and say, "They're gone. The wildlife is gone." And then, like I said, it's irreplaceable. So I'm asking you to deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
So next, John Breen, and followed by Mike Hewitt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for your patience in this long afternoon. Again, my name is John Breen, and I live at 8519 Northwest 96th Court, which is due east of the proposed development. I moved to Central Oregon in 2000 and Lower Bridge in 2015. In the past 20 years, growth in this area has clearly been explosive. Many of these developments have impacted me, but growth is a fact of life in desirable areas. I haven't made any formal opposition to any developments until now. I do believe the cluster development on the old DE mine site is not simply a not-in-my-backyard issue, but of a different nature altogether. This really shouldn't happen in any backyard under the current circumstances. Creating a housing development on the edge of a nature preserve in a fragile, fragile riparian zone, on a wild and scenic waterway, on marginal soils, with alternative septic and no protective roadblock is a recipe for potential disaster. Changing zoning to allow for floodplain land to factor into the calculation of lot size for high-density development does potentially set a dangerous precedent that prioritizes financial gain over the health of our waterways and our ecosystems, while really giving nothing back to the community, and endangering the aquifer in this case with many straws going in and increasing the liability for the county. So finding workarounds to increase the density of development along a wild and scenic waterway is kind of inherently antithetical to the purpose of that designation in the first place. Recent flood damage from the August storms all but demolished my driveway, leaving the entire garage with a layer of mud, very costly repairs. It's folly to think that this development would not be at even greater risk and that we won't see more of these storms. When initially purchasing this home, I was told I was in competition with a buyer who was gonna open up a B and B there. I made a decision not to do this, to prevent the negative impacts to the waterway, in spite of the income it could provide on a bottomless swimming and fishing hole. That also happens to house a family of otters. The local Audubon Society has confirmed 181 species of birds that are dependent upon this area of the deschutes for nesting or their migrations. Light, noise, water, and solid waste pollution from this development are real concerns. This project is not contributing anything of value to the community without further extensive investigation and remediation. We're not discussing affordable housing for preschool teachers or restaurant employees. They're not likely to purchase riverfront housing. In fact, given the history of the building sites, such as we've heard today, I wouldn't purchase one of these lots to build, and I don't know anyone who would. So the plan to finance cleanup, being dependent on the dubious proposition of these lots being profitable, is unrealistic at best. Some things are legal, but not necessarily responsible. Converting all of our hay and alfalfa and human feed crops to hemp to service our CBD obsession and pouring our groundwater in it may be legal, but not clearly responsible. This development may benefit a few individuals while bringing risk of harm to many, including an incredibly fragile ecosystem. Whether or not it's legal will be determined by our mutual, highly capable attorneys, but I encourage us all to make the responsible choice for our community and our wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Hewitt, followed by Eva Eagle.
Name's Mike Hewitt, 547 West Jefferson, Sisters, Oregon. I'm a building contractor and have been for 24 years. I've worked in the trades in Central Oregon for 28 years. I've walked the property extensively. I've heard all of the, uh, of the testimony, and I'm not an expert in a lot of those areas, only in...
When you say walk the property, are you referring to the east side proposed development or the whole property?
Uh, the proposed development.
Okay, thank you.
So I can just speak from a builder's standpoint, looking at site plans and, and building envelopes that we look at all the time. That's what we do almost on a daily basis. I can't see any issues with any of the lots that are proposed to be able to build. Septic feasibility studies not being done, of course, are a, a little bit of a question mark, but the size of the lots, I don't see that being an issue anywhere to, uh, have a reserve system and a main system for, uh, the area. And each individual property having its own well, um, can't see that there's a size problem that the lots seem plenty big enough to allow that to happen. So also, just from client demands that I have, the, the constant phone calls we field about people looking for buildable sites, land, um, that we just don't have a lot available. As you guys all well know that, Deschutes County, it's, it's tough to find a decent buildable lot, um, something that has good views, um, something that has good access. This has all of that. So I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
So the well is what, 100 feet from the septic? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. And then how much square footage you need for the area of the reserve septic field?
Uh, standard system depends on the size of the house, but 300 to 400 feet, lineal feet of line, um, and then, you know, then you're gonna have to have that much in reserve for if there's a failure, the main system.
But the 300 feet is not just 300, it can be 3100s.
It can be any equation.
Or 650s.
Yep.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a... Yeah, it just adds to total that footage.
Right.
And then that's with a standard system, but if you did an ATT system or something, you could have significantly less.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and that, uh, you know, until the feasibility studies and all of that process is taken care of. But I've never seen a lot, um, from an acre or a lot larger, no matter where it is, whether it's rocky, sandy, whatever, um, not have a septic system that will work. Just depends on what the sanitarium, what the county allows, and what they want to have on that to be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Eva Eagle, and then followed by Rex Barber.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Eva Eagle. I live in Sisters at 17212 Pine Drive. Actually, we're quite a bit outside of town, but our address is Sisters. And this development is not gonna be in my backyard. I don't have a financial dog in this fight, which apparently just about everybody else does, living near or maybe gonna make money off building houses there. I care because of what kind of a beautiful space it is. If you, if you ride a bike out where I live, if you like birds, if you think it's wonderful to go fishing in the river, this is a pretty special place, and so that's why I care. And I do wanna answer one question. Commissioner Adair Hewitt asked, said it seems like it's really used a lot, this area, and so there's already a lot of activity there. Most of the use, the cars you see parked there are people fishing or birding, both of which are very quiet, un-intensive activities, and they're not bringing their dogs with them. So I think it, it may look like it's really heavily used, but it's not anything like people being on trails on the other side of the river. But this proposal, um, it's like it's a zombie development. It just refuses to die. I remember very well the discussions in 2015, and Commissioner DeBoe was on the other side of the table from me then. Uh, that, you know, as you know, that proposal was rejected by the hearings officer then, and I think that the applicants expected a denial. And I think that, I personally think that's why they withdrew their proposal. But they're back with the same proposal, and I'm just shocked, really, that it is considered acceptable to take land like this, right next to the river, and divide it up into these tiny little lots. I mean, it, you wouldn't, this wouldn't be allowed in my neighborhood, where the smallest lots are five acres, which I think is too small for our neighborhood, and as people have moved in, the wildlife count has definitely gone down. But I am just shocked that this is something that we are so close to considering, uh, being allowed. And I guarantee that taxpayer money will be needed to remedy the wrongs if we do allow it. But these are my personal views. Today, I really wanted to bring you the attention to the testimony of the Oregon Land and, and Water Alliance. Our, our letter is in your packet. It was written originally by Paul Lipskin, who is an attorney. I am not. In fact, he's, as you probably know, he was, is a retired Superior Court judge. And we, uh, we really agree with the denial of this application by the hearings officer. And a really important reason, and I think it has to be re and re and reemphasized, is the LLC's failure to prove that the financial capacity to get the work done within the timeframe allowed by law. And I think with these applicants, there's a special reason to fear. There's been a lot of kind of shifty activity over the years. There's been a bankruptcy. They're a limited liability company. If something doesn't get done, you and I are gonna be faced with the bill. They're not gonna be paying it. And I think, uh, it's especially ironic that, of course, they wanna put off the, the repair work, the rehabilitation work, till they've got building permits on all the lots. Well, that's, to me, another sign that they don't really have the money to get this done. So we think those are really important reasons to turn this down, apart from anything that I might think about the environment. But with regard to the environment, we do believe, as the hearings officer apparently did not, that you would need a Goal V exception to do this development. And you, you've heard from ODFW. In addition, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department said it was incompatible with the scenic river area requirements. The fact that it wasn't inventoried just means that it wasn't inventoried, and we all know that the county hasn't had the money to do good inventories of the wildlife resources. So it's not surprising to me that something this incredibly beautiful and supporting of wildlife doesn't seem to have, have the right inventory. And as far as the open space methodology, we're certainly not understanding how you can count floodplain as part of your open space. I thought maybe it was because they are therefore gonna have people walking around in it with their dogs, and apparently that's exactly what's gonna happen, which makes me even more concerned. So I would ask you to deny this, uh, appeal, and I hope that you do take a look at our letter, which has more detail on these points in it. And I just, I just hope you take the opportunity to apply the right precedent and don't authorize something that's a really bad idea for the sake of getting something cleaned up, or for the sake of that you are afraid that, that somebody who wants to build a lot of houses is gonna feel, uh, like they've been turned down unfairly. It's really clear that you have the authority to support the denial, and I hope you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you, Eva. Rex Barber and, and that Leah Ross. If anybody's come in since we started and hasn't filled out a blue form that wants to speak today and testify, there's, the forms are over there. Fill them out and give them to Sharon. I'm down to just, uh, three, four, three remaining speakers, so.
Good afternoon. My name is Rex Barber. As you've heard, I own the, most of the farm ground that you see on the, on the map, uh, to the north and to the west of the subject property. We own 1,750 acres approximately. It's Big Falls Ranch. I'm the managing partner. I'm here to testify in support of this project. Got a lot of notes, but I didn't bring my glasses, so, nah, that's all right. I first became aware of this property in 1962, when my dad took me down there to show me what a dicolite mine looked like. And so for the next 50 years, I have, 60 years? God.
Almost 60.
Yeah, almost 60. I, I've been aware of this property. My family farmed in the Lower Bridge area in the mid-'70s, and then, uh, in the fall of 1988, we bought our existing farm, and I've been there ever since. You know, everybody's wired differently, and that's okay. You know, it's okay to say, "I don't want this project," but I, I'm here as someone who has seen this area evolve, and, uh, I don't see any real problems with the project. It's, it's something that will allow the reclamation of, uh, a problem that the county has had for 50 or 60 years. I look at it, at it as being very similar to the Cascades Campus. The Cascades Campus is sitting on an old mining landfill. You know, there's, there's solutions to problems if you're just creative enough. And I think the group that, that is proposing this development is creating, creative enough to pull it off. You know, Greg has a history of doing, uh, reclamation of, of waste sites and, and problem sites over in the valley, and, uh, you know, I have done a little bit of work for the group in the reclamation of the mine area on the west side of the road. When they had the pivot up, I was, took care of the pivot and, and planted the grasses, which did a lot to remediate the dust point. Was it 100%? Nope. But it's never gonna be 100%. Not, not in my lifetime, not in, in two or three lifetimes, but at least it was a, a, an example of these guys wanting to do the right thing. And, you know, I applaud them for that. So, uh, you know, do, do you turn the clock back and do you say, uh, "We shouldn't have allowed, the, the mine shouldn't have ever been developed"? No. Do you turn the clock back and say that Eagle Rock Estates shouldn't have ever been developed? No. Do you say that Lower Bridge Estates shouldn't have been developed? No. This development, I think, is, uh, as well-planned as a development on this site can be. And if that is the means to an end, so be it. I'm all for it. And if you have any questions, I'm, probably have more firsthand knowledge of that property than anybody in the room.
Questions? So for this east side parcel, the east side development, uh, I'm just thinking you're, you're extreme knowledge. So we just heard about, uh, the, uh, waste disposal history out there, you know, documented or undocumented, or whatever. You're, yeah, any thoughts about that? I mean, did you see?
To, to my knowledge, the waste disposal on the east side was all outlaw disposal. Let's call it that. The waste disposal on the west side, there was, uh, there was a process of trying to get it approved for a waste site, but, uh, some of the people that were contacted as potential clients started bringing stuff over before it was permitted. And it was a comedy of errors, I think. You know, things were different in 1976 than they are in 2019.
Great. I mean, that even puts it in perspective a little bit more. Thank you.
We, um, we've heard the, about the pivot and the grasses and things, uh, helping the west side. Is that an ongoing project, or is that, is there more to do there, or?
There might be more to do there. You know, when you, when your alternative is native grasses, there's only so much you can do. You have to let nature take its course. Unfortunately, nature taking its course with a native grass stand in the high desert takes 50 or 60 years sometimes. So, uh, you know, does it look way better than it today than it did five years ago? Yep. And I'll just leave it at that. Yep. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Derr, any questions?
So when did you have the pivot running then, that you were responsible at?
If I recall, it was two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. It may have been two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine.
Okay, but a couple of years, and you were trying to bring the grass back.
Well, we, we flew seed on. We flew a considerable amount of seed on. And I knew that it, it needed an initial irrigation to, to get established. And so that's why we ran it for, for two years.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we might have had more questions, but we're, towards the end of the day, I, I don't know. There's probably some interesting things to ask about. We've seen a lot of interesting pictures. I can't think of anything specific, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Rex. Leah Ross, followed by Nunzi Gould.
Hello, my name is Leah Ross. I'm a Bend resident, also a Realtor. And I want to speak in support of the development on the land of the Lower Bridgeway. I'm going to read a lot, because I have a lot going on in my brain, and I won't be able to keep it all straight for you. So forgive me. I've been following the issue for the last year. And after researching a lot of the history on both sides, I agree with what Mr. Daniels has been working for. I'm a Bend native, and I'm typically the one that balks at development, usually on the other side. However, what struck me about this project was the amount of care in the due process of making this previously abandoned property usable again. We all saw the degeneration of this acreage over the years. We've all got a deeper look into it today. And it was on track of being a hazardous waste land that promoted trespassing, illegal dumping, and vandalism, yes. But when Mr. Daniels stepped in to develop this property in two thousand and six, I observed that an immense, immense amount of cleanup has occurred. A person cared well enough about this piece of land to invest some serious money into it and the suitability of developing it. Now that there's been a lot of attention to the property and proper supervised care with environmental agencies cleaning up and getting it cleared to build, setback guidelines, preservation attended to, there's more opportunities to provide housing to families, much like the ones buying in the surrounding areas. As a Realtor, I can get behind a developer who puts that much of effort into preservation, remediation, and the best and most valuable use of an otherwise disregarded parcel of land. It's obvious Deschutes County is in a housing crisis. It would not be right to deny development of nineteen homes. That would not otherwise have been a thought. Housing on all economic levels are needed here. And to build of these homes contributes to our inventory, creating more supply. And when supply and demand start to level out, affordability becomes more of an option for all of our properties. Obstruction of view or disturbance to some vegetation just doesn't justify the opposition of providing more homes here. When I look at the proposed lots, the natural value of this land is being preserved in a cautious manner. With a planned HOA and open space, the homes would have one cohesive managing entity, keeping up on the land, the value, the safety, along with being updated on any environmental concerns. And this is far better than fourteen different homeowners doing what they want with their landscaping and not showing concern for their land and its use. It's going to be managed appropriately. A cluster development preserves the land and its best use. We all know that in cases of development and growth, on vacant land prompts neighbors to continuously oppose it. I've been on that side. But opponents have argued very contradictory points of the land being hazardous, though environmental agencies have worked diligently to test clean and clear the land to have a single-family residence on it. That wouldn't be the case if it wasn't deemed safe, in my opinion. I'm sorry, but if the DEQ questioned its safety from contaminants, it would have opened up a much larger issue to surrounding properties and the river and the rimrock and such. They also complained about it being vacant and dust blowing onto the land and the open space being on a floodplain, et cetera. But looking across the way and seeing nineteen homes is probably more realistic of what the complaint is about. I know it gets irritating, and this, they're trying to get any type of argument to stick. But I'm sorry, none of them really make sense. And just to have this pointed out, there's been now, bringing up a topic of a bankruptcy of a member that wasn't there before. And just a quick search of crystalbolyte that was brought up earlier. That's a powder that is made at high temperatures, yes, but it's used in dentistry impression material. It's also the same chemical found in quartz. So it's certainly safe for our mouths. I don't see how that would be a problem in land. Okay, so to, just to finish up, when a developer actually comes along and invests in land diligently and making it buildable for thirteen, nineteen small acreage homes in a neighborhood, I believe that he's taken the extra precautions for river setbacks and habitats and never degrading the value of riparian rights and disturbing vegetation along the land. So I don't believe it should be denied. And we all know that real estate desirability varies per person. And if one does a little bit of research, the planned development sites have over a hundred feet from the river and will be setback even fifty feet more from the room. So the information's out there, and I think it's, a cluster development would be great. And we can all share in those reviews, just like they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Yes.
Nunzi Gould, and if there's anybody else that hasn't testified that wants to, this is my last form here. If you want to testify, there's a blue form up there to sign and give to Sharon over here.
Hello, Nunzi Gould. I live in Deschutes County. Deschutes County has an incredible asset, which is our natural environment. And how we go about protecting that in the force of the huge population growth that we've had, despite the economic recessions, is really important to the future of our community. It's important to the future prosperity of our community. And what we do know is that our community is growing with densities in cities. And we are protecting our rural areas so that people can enjoy those. So I just handed out a USGS map. And I want you to notice in that map, the Deschutes River on the right upper corner. And I circled Deep Canyon. Deep Canyon has a spring in it. And if you're privy to other land use decisions, you will know that's a very important spring. There aren't many springs in our community. And I encourage you to go and visit them, because they are truly unique. As you know, surface water and groundwater are hydrologically connected. So when you put in wells, it's like sucking out of your Pepsi. You're sucking up groundwater, and that's affecting surface water. So nineteen new wells is not a good thing for our natural resources. If those same nineteen homes, for which your Realtors can sell in our cities, they would use substantially less water. It would be managed appropriately. It would have backflow devices. And your properties likely would not have frost-free hydrants, like those of you who live in the rural community have, which provide no ecological protection to your groundwater. Because in rural areas, people don't use backflow devices. They're not required to. I want to read from a submittal, from DEQ to Greg Daniels dated August two thousand and seventeen, regarding the east parcel. Groundwater is present in an unconfined upper alluvial aquifer approximately seven hundred to, sorry, seventy-five to a hundred feet below ground surface. And in a lower confined, semi-confined alluvial aquifer at depths of two hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty feet below ground surface. The upper aquifer is the source of springs in the Deep Creek Canyon area northwest of the site. The lower aquifer is proposed as a residential water supply for the site. Now, that's quite interesting. What we do know is that seven miles away, groundwater wells impact the springs at Deep Canyon Creek. And groundwater wells impact temperatures and flows in the middle Deschutes River. I'd like to read something else that's in your record. And this is in your SMEA to RR10 rezone record, where you extended the timeline beyond ten and a half years that these applicants had to perfect on their rezone conditions of approval. You've given them more time, because they talked about the difficulties of the economic recession. And I think that your own staff have identified that Deschutes County has been the fastest-growing county in the state multiple years, over and over. And I, I would bet to say that the economic woes are the applicant's economic woes and not recession-related woes. This is August two, two thousand and nineteen. And this is in reference to the west parcel progress report. A new groundwater monitoring well was completed on August two to evaluate an upper unconfined alluvial aquifer and a lower confined and/or semi-confined alluvial aquifer. Water samples were obtained from the lower aquifer on August two, two thousand and nineteen, with laboratory results pending. I think it would be nice to see those results.
Have they not been made public? Is that what you're saying, or?
I just think it would be nice to see those results. Obviously, there was a request by DEQ to put in yet another monitoring well in reference to this whole large development. And I think that it, from a public health perspective, it's important.
I can clarify that. Well, you'll have a time in a rebuttal to do that. I, I just was.
So the wild and scenic waterway protection of the Deschutes River governs structural setbacks. This includes structures such as fences, rock walls, fishing platforms, docks, and any structure that would include benches, signs, and any structure that Deschutes County would not consider a residential structure. The scenic waterway protection of the Deschutes also governs residential structures and their various setbacks. The condition of approval for the SMEA to RR10 rezone references only residential structure setbacks. Now, what's unique about this particular setting is you have a wild and scenic river next to it. You don't have those in other PUD settings, like what was described outside of Sisters. I recommend that Deschutes County use the term setback for structures, as this would include, beyond a doubt, what is used in the scenic water regulations to include all structures, not just residential structures. So you've got the scenic waterway. We should be using the word "structure", not just residential structures, when we talk about this development. The Riparian Area Management Plan was undertaken in December two thousand and eight, when the river was at high levels and high flows. There is need today, just like there was in 'oh eight, and in future, to have a baseline summertime, Riparian analysis, when the river is at low level and low flows. If the ramp is to be evaluated by a biologist and only evaluation is done at high water levels, you would miss things like vegetation, species, trails, river accesses that are currently submerged. So when, when irrigation stops, the water goes up. That's when the ramp was done. We need a ramp that shows when water levels are low. Because summertime is likely when, when your PUD people are going to want to be down there fishing or walking the dog. Even today, it was kind of nippy out. In order to evaluate whether you're meeting the ramp objective, at least you need that summertime baseline. So reviewing the ramp every three to five years, beginning after construction, means that there are many years between now and five years for conditions to change or to deteriorate. The ramp does not mention wildlife fencing. It mentions fences and fencing multiple times. Use of fence and fencing is very misplaced as an allowed use, since fence is a structure under the scenic waterway regulations. So a buyer might think they can fence their property, but they certainly can't fence it into the scenic water bay or visible from the scenic waterway or visible from your hundred-yard radius of your historic resources, the Robertson Lynch sign and the Willamette Valley and Cascade Mountain Road. So structures like your rock wall fences, private property signs, those degrade the natural area, and they change the character of the area when you're interpreting your historic resource. Under the current CUP, the hundred-yard radius for the Lynch and Roberts sign gets split between two tax lots. This makes for double the oversight. I suggest it be on a common open space lot, so you don't have the issues of whose property fence is going to be visible from your historic sign or within that hundred-yard radius. The CCNRs are boilerplate. They're just like your, your odor detection in your marijuana reg applications. What is this about lawn in the open space? The property doesn't have water rights.
We'll have to end your testimony.
So, my point being, please read these documents and understand that Deschutes County does not enforce CCNRs. And the only recourse individuals have from an HOA is not overseen by Deschutes County. And the biologists who might give their report in five years, there's no oversight in Deschutes County.
Is that wrapping up, or is that?
It is. I'm almost turning the page. And when, when your biologist reports that twenty property owners and their families have trampled the vegetation and widened the trails and displaced the wildlife, that, so what? What is the recourse? What is the, the preservation? So the county currently has no staff who manages your own conservation easements. And that was a condition of your rezone.
Stop until you get to the finish. Additional written testimony if you want. It's not fair to everybody else.
The reason I'm going on, sir, is because you said you'd like to hear from the public.
And we do, but we've cut off other people at much shorter than what we've, than what you've been able to testify for. And so there'll be a time for written, probably for written additional information.
So more than eleven years ago, my last sentence, more than eleven years ago, you identified as part of just the reason a conservation. part of just the reason, a conservation easement that is not yet signed. That was a conservation easement for your water quality, for your scenic resources, and for your natural areas. And I would like to know, sir, who within CDD oversees your conservation easement? And when will that be signed? Because we're now into beyond 10 and a half years. And I don't believe that document actually needs to wait for the entire PUD sign-off or needs to wait for this MEA rezone, because there's a carve-out that says that it can be rescinded once signed. But in the meantime, through all of this other remediation and groundwork, and who knows what else might come up, I believe Deschutes County has an obligation to getting that conservation easement signed and to protecting things like springs and the water quality that's in our scenic waterway, the Deschutes River, that abuts his property. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
So, this may be time for rebuttal testimony. Well, is that the last testimony we have? Would be just rebuttal from the applicant? Okay. And I don't remember we put a time limit on that.
Yeah, so we placed a 10-minute rebuttal. And staff's available for any questions, if you did have any at the end.
Okay. So, you want to join us back up?
10 minutes could mean 15 or 20, the way it's been going today. So, I just kind of.
Yeah, I'm glad I stopped my testimony in, at the applicant bearing the rebuttal earlier on time in order to witness all this. So, just saying.
Thanks.
We have the applicant that's going to testify briefly. Scott Wallace is our environmental consultant, and then I'll wrap up. And I realize we're going to have written, record remain open, so I won't be long.
Yeah. And I have, I know I have several questions from the various testifiers, so we may have a little extra for answering our questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg Daniels again on public record. I wanted to correct a couple of things that were said. And those involved Ms. Dixon's comment about my testimony saying that I was the managing member of the LLC. That is incorrect. I am, and I stated on the public record today, a representative of their Lower Bridge Road LLC today, number one. Number two, the word bankruptcy has come up in front of you. And at various times, Ms. Dixon brought it up. Someone else testified to something related to this LLC, the Lower Bridge Road LLC. There is not a bankruptcy associated with Lower Bridge Road LLC. One of their members, who is now deceased, is in a personal bankruptcy. Nothing to do with Lower Bridge Road LLC. The final one was financial capacity was questioned again by Ms. Dixon and a few other people. I will tell you, the LLC is ready and has proven up and will continue to give you any information you need from a financial standpoint to not only fund the development of this property, but to fund any future pushback from people to stop this development, including any actions at Luba. Thank you.
If we could, I'm going to let Scott address the environmental issues, and then I'll wrap up.
So, the question that the last speaker raised with regards to, I'd like to see some data on a well that was drilled in August of this year. That work is part of the West Side Remedial Investigation Cleanup that, as I indicated earlier, we've addressed this overall 600-plus acre Lower Bridge area in two halves. We're hearing about the east half today. The west half will have a very parallel, similar track to what this, what this hearing is about in terms of environmental, because we followed the same DEQ voluntary cleanup program process on the west side as we have the east. So, you know, the additional data and all of the work that's been done on the west side, which includes a lot more acreage, it's 400 acres plus or minus. It is the site of where all the lagoons were located. It's where the mine actually operated and where most of this dicholite was extracted and processed. So, there's, you know, there's more to come on that. And that's all I can really say, other than, you know, we are working with DEQ and OHA in the same parallel fashion that we did on the east to address the salient appropriate environmental concerns and issues that have been identified. Now, you know, if there's, if there's more information, we are, we are interested in looking at that. But I will tell you that we have studied and looked at all of the things that have been identified to date, and that's what's still forthcoming on the west side.
Did you guys want to ask him questions before I go or at the end?
Well, so there's the two wells that are on the west, east side, the property we're concerned with today.
Yes.
Are the results of those public or is that private?
Well, the information on that was part of our cleanup and remedial investigation that was submitted in 2016, 17, and was part of the basis for the no further action determination. DEQ identified, and we worked together, and it wasn't their idea. It was, was well-defined within the geologic and hydrogeologic community that there's two aquifers out there. There's an upper unconfined, and there's a lower confined semi-confined. They are not in continuity with each other. That means that they are not flowing and interchanging waters together. The upper aquifer is 75 to 100 feet deep. That's the aquifer that feeds into the springs in Deep Canyon that was referred to. It also is the aquifer that discharges and is in continuity with the Deschutes River in this reach. The lower aquifer, which is where we drilled the wells, that is what's proposed for the domestic wells, because they will not be pulling water from an aquifer that's in continuity with the river or springs. The water quality testing that was done included all drinking water quality parameters in accordance with, you know, DEQ, Oregon Health, all water quality things in order to drink water in the state of Oregon. We looked at radionuclides associated with, you know, radioactive waste and other things. I will say that those things occur naturally in the environment, and we did detect some, but they're far below any action levels or indications of residual impacts from historical activities. So, that was really, the purpose was to demonstrate that if we develop 19 lots on the east parcel and they have to put in private wells, is that water safe for drinking? And those two wells are actually on two of the lots, so they will be capable of being converted into use for dust suppression and construction use, you know, when the development is built. And it'll also be suitable for people to use when, and the time comes for them to tap into them for their own exempt personal use.
Any other questions for Scott or Greg?
No, but I got some stuff I'll just lay out, so you can maybe answer as you go, too. So, it was, terminology was used river view lots. And I think of 50-foot setback from, you know, rim, rock, rimrock, whatever. You know, do we think of these as river view lots or a setback that kind of makes them view lots off to the mountains? And I don't know that that's a real specific thing, but there's a difference between setting up a residence kind of looking down into the canyon, is my thought. So, just how that might flow. The, I kind of would like to hear about, you know, financial capacity, not, not saying there's capacity, but what does this mean as in, in a land use decision and what's financial capacity? My point is, you know, if there's a sale of a parcel and a house built, there's transactions that happen in the future. So, this is more of a logical lawyer question, not the fact that here's my bank account balance, because I'm not, that's not where I'm going with that request. And then trails down to the river. I just, if that's in the record or, you know, there's something to read about or understand, just because that was mentioned a few times. So, there's just a few items for you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'll just try to address the high points of the testimony and again, follow up with written rebuttal once the record.
Excuse me, I have a question about Deep Canyon. Is that on the western side? Is that in, within the property?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that water been tested?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's all part of the report that's still in progress.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the testimony from Mr. Ramos about the process choices and urging you to not make choices in this quasi-judicial land use application, which affects one property that could have impacts countywide. And he suggests that you should make those choices in a legislative process. And with all respect to Mr. Ramos and the, you did make that choice in a legislative process. We spent two years going through that floodplain amendment process. We attended all of those hearings at Mr. Daniel's cost. We did not have a subdivision application pending at that time in order to wait for that process to occur. As you know, that process got appealed and it was withdrawn, not because the county changed their mind, not because the county didn't vet the process and decide that cluster subdivisions are in appropriate use in the circumstances of the floodplain zone and under what conditions, but because the county felt like there was additional evidence that would protect the decision on appeal at Luba. So, you have gone through a legislative process, and we do know what you would decide. And going back to supplement the evidentiary record in order to protect your decision on appeal doesn't change that process that we all spent two years going through and attending and testifying to. With regard to the fencing provisions and the discussion about wildlife, we have included all of the wildlife area fencing provisions and protections for wildlife area in the riparian area management plan, despite the fact that our property is not zoned for the wildlife area overlay zone. The biologist did submit a report responsive to ODF and W's comments. The biologist's report is based on site-specific circumstance review of this property. She's been on the site and is familiar with all of the wildlife on the site. Septic feasibility is required prior to final plat approval on these properties. So, we, as you indicated, we're not quite there yet. We've done enough testing of the soil to determine that it is suitable for septic systems, and the septic feasibility analysis for each lot will be done in accordance with county process and procedure. The 2015 decision is not binding. The 2015 decision is the only county decision in which a, and it's fact, the only decision period in which a person has ruled that open space is not, that you can't use the floodplain acreage for open space. All of the other decisions prior to that time have been contrary to it, as have been the 2019 decision, as is the board's legislative history associated with the current floodplain zone amendments.
So, I want to follow up, kind of like you did with Mr. Ramos, that, so, I throw out the word, well, because he was kind of putting that decision against the 2019 decision and treating them as equal. Everything else is less than equal. What's your perspective on that? I, I throw out the word, it seems like he thought it was, those were inadvertent decisions, and he thought that was a good idea or good conception. What's your thought on that?
What the hearings officer in 2019 ruled about those prior decisions is that they did not contain a legal analysis of the issues that are before him today. That there was an assumption in those decisions that floodplain-zoned acreage could be used as open space without deciding it.
So, it'd been, it had been assumed, which is a, is a, is not, is like, kind of, like on the face of it, it looks like that can be done, so therefore, so that's more than just, oh, we never thought about it. It's, we didn't think we had to.
We didn't think we had to make those findings because we have always done it this way. I mean, you guys.
That's discussed in the 19 hearings officer's decision. We can find this top, that discussion in there about.
That's correct. On those slides I gave you, the discussion that the, I cited to those pages, and it's within those page sites about the floodplain and the open space, where he talks about those prior decisions. And where he makes, the 2019 hearings officer makes his decision not in reliance on those prior decisions. He makes his decision based on all of the evidence in the record in front of him at that time, including those decisions, but not because of those decisions. And if you, let's just go right to that really quickly. At the back of that PowerPoint slideshow, that, the slides that I didn't get, give you, there are the current floodplain zone provisions regarding what's permitted in the floodplain zone. And if you look, open space is an outright listed use in the floodplain zone. The other thing that's listed outright in the floodplain zone is portions of a residential use that do not contain structures such as lawn, garden, or play areas. The other thing that's also listed in this floodplain zone is a subdivision. A planned development is a subdivision. It's not a creature in and of itself. It is a land division. It has very specific requirements. And it is the planned development provisions of the RR10 zone that allow the one unit per 7.5 density for cluster subdivisions. It's not, we're not transferring density. We're not getting a density bonus out of the floodplain. It is the cluster and the planned development subdivision provisions in the RR10 zone that allow that density bonus in exchange for the preservation of 65% open space. And the characterization that you can't use floodplain-zoned acreage for open space simply because you can't put a structure in the floodplain is a mischaracterize, mischaracterize characterization of this, sorry, of this application, because the protection that this application provides for the floodplain-zoned acreage is far greater than what would be provided by a standard subdivision where all the lots could individually own this treasured acreage. Instead, we have it protected through a homeowners association. We have the homeowners association funded by the lot owners, and we have the common area managed cohesively with a biologist's review. That's, provides far greater protection for this resource than any standard subdivision. The other thing I think that's really interesting you guys asked is there, are there other communities in which floodplain-zoned acreage has been used for open space in the circumstance where it's river acreage, riparian area? Well, South County, the entire crosswater community, the golf course is all open space. That runs right through the Deschutes River, and all the riparian areas are right there. That's all open space. The idea that you can't put a structure in the open space doesn't mean that you can't use, Mr. Daniels owns that acreage. Mr. Daniels pays taxes on that acreage, and Mr. Daniels has come forward with a plan to protect that acreage. So, to say that he's not giving back to this community in some way with this project, all of that beautiful acreage that you guys saw is going to be protected through this plan as opposed to having individual lots, and individual lot owners responsible for the care of that acreage.
Comment. Tia and I have been at this so long, she sees me as this project and the LLC, by the way, with her comments, just so note.
So, as I mentioned earlier, the cleanup process that the county invest, the county invested in this land and invested in this process in 2008, when they agreed to the zone change and to the resolution of intent to rezone. The mine was abandoned for over 40 years. And like the dump, this project, like the county dump that, that one of the testifiers mentioned, transferring that to the college and allowing them to undertake the cleanup and reuse of that property is an appropriate use and a way to allow properties to get cleaned up. Like that project, this is exactly the same example of using free-market environmental measures to create value where the regulatory, the environmental regulatory environment isn't, isn't doing it. And to create an investment vehicle, an catalyst, to have this for change, to allow reuse and redevelopment of a former mine site. The abandoned mine is far less scenic for our resource corridor than 19 home sites. And again, what you're talking about, the river view, as you guys noticed, there isn't, we've got 100-foot elevation difference between the riparian area and where the buildable areas are. And there isn't a straight drop-off. We've got 50-foot setbacks from. We've got 50-foot setbacks from rimrock. We've got 20-foot setbacks from lot lines. All of those things, in addition to topography and vegetation, are going to obscure these home sites from the river view. It may be that the properties across the river view these home sites, but from the river, it's going to be very difficult to see these homes, or at least the majority of them. And at the end of the day...
Good question about that, kind of related to that. This came up about the rim, you know, there's that 50-foot setback, and when we went out there, we realized we can't really see much rock rim. It's kind of just hillside going over the edge, some of it's steeper than others. And then it was, testimony today was that, well, some of the rim has been covered up with, I guess, sand and dirt from the mining operation. So, A, is that true? And B, is there going to be some plan to clean that back off so rim shows and then major back from that or what? I didn't really notice that or didn't even think of that when I was looking at it. I thought it was interesting that there wasn't rimrock there, but I had no idea, you know, why there wasn't, so.
Yeah, there's definitely been material piled up around the property as it got mined and as it got reclaimed. Whether or not there was material that was put on top of what the county, because the definition of rimrock is very specific, and whether or not there was material that was put on, what would otherwise meet the definition of rimrock, I can't say. But what I can say is, we take the property as it is. When we come in for landscape management review, we will be locating rimrock and measuring from that 50-foot setback. And we have specifically agreed to not seek exceptions to the rimrock setbacks, so that, because there are opportunities for exceptions to those setbacks if you meet the requirements. And we've specifically agreed, as a part of this application, not to seek those. Whether or not there'll be grading on each individual lot that removes some of that berm, at this point, I can't say, other than there will be landscape management review, state scenic waterway review, and septic feasibility analysis, all conducted prior to any building on this property.
So, that was the second thing I was going to ask you about. In something I read, and there was discussion about the wild scenic rivers, and then I know that Oregon Parks is usually who you submit things to about also with regard to what's permitted from the other side of the river. What are people able to see? So, you do things like roof color, roof type, you know, the facades, I mean, everything, decks. Is that, is that all in play here? I'd assumed it would be, because it seems like that whole river would be subject to that. So, every, my experience has been, each house you do has to do that, has to go through that process and get approvals.
That's correct. We have, in addition to the state, we have, each house has to go through state scenic waterway review with the colors, as well as landscape management review at the county.
With the county, which is what, yeah, with our county CDD, okay.
That's correct.
That would provide some protection for the people concerned about how these houses will look, at least from down on the riverside, maybe not from the other side of the canyon, but it will, provides, I mean, that's the goal of it anyway, from what I've seen, so, okay.
That's correct. And so, right now, we're asking you for tentative plan review, and as I mentioned earlier in our testimony, the hearings officer ruled that we met all of the approval criteria with the exception of the SMEA review and the financial ability. And so, we'll talk a little bit more about the financial ability, but all of the issues that you've heard before you today are addressed in the hearings officer's decision in great detail. And so, I would ask that you address the two issues on appeal in your findings, as well as to adopt the hearings officer's findings with regard to the other issues. At the end of the day, this community will be something that Deschutes County can be proud of, and this process that Deschutes County invested in in 2008 can be used as an example to set for other abandoned mines or environmentally sensitive properties that don't have cleanup obligations or funds available to them. So, we're happy to answer any questions. Again, I'll try to get back to the financial stuff. The way the code reads is that you have to show that you have the financial capability to build the project within four years. The county has not been very consistent about the type of evidence required to meet that criterion. And so, when we came forward with our evidence, it consisted of testimony from my client saying, "I've invested $3 million and 12 years of my life in this. I'm going to continue, and I have the money to do it, and I intend not only to take it to final plat review, but to, but I'm willing to defend any decisions that the county makes on appeal if we have to go to Luba." Subsequently, we submitted into the record a letter from Real Vest, which is the managing member of the Lower Bridge LLC, together with a money market statement. And that letter from Real Vest indicates that that money market account is for the development of this property, and that is what it will be used for, and it has twice the amount of funds in it than the cost estimate that we've submitted to you to build this project. So, that is the evidence that, there is nobody refuting, there's no countervailing evidence that we can't build this project, and my client's sitting right here telling you that that's his intention, that the testimony itself is evidence of an intent and evidence that you can take as truthful. Trails to the river, the last thing. There are two existing trails along this area from Bordenbeck Park and going along the riparian area. As a part of the riparian area management plan, we agreed that the construction of, there would only be one more trail from this project down to that river, that we agreed that those two trails and the one more trail would also be monitored and signed to keep people out of the riparian vegetation. Right now, there's nobody stopping anybody from traipsing all through the riparian vegetation down there. There's nobody stopping them from bringing dogs. We also agreed that there wouldn't be dogs in the riparian area, that there would be no fences in the riparian area, no structures in the riparian area. And so, those protections are all a part of this project.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Dyer?
Right. Because I did, I did believe on the board for the park that it did have, like, little bags for your dog.
Yeah.
I thought I saw that when I was out there on Friday. Did you guys read that? Did you see it?
I didn't see it, but...
Oh, I...
He's got a dog. He picks up the litter, and he could, for 28 years, he's monitored the park himself. He worked for Parks and Rec District, and he paid thousands of dollars for those kennels signed. He had all those plants planted, and he had the dog, you guys...
Yeah, I thought there were, so, anyway.
And just for future reference, the Bordenbeck Park was donated by the predecessor of this property.
Okay, yes. I read the history of it. So, okay.
Further questions?
I did have a question about the berm. You know, it seems to be around the edge. So, you're not really saying today, if you're going to, like, smooth that out, you can't, you can't give us that information?
Not based on each individual lot. There'll be lot grading or drainage plans associated with the development of each lot. We don't have an intention of wholesale going and taking it down and disturbing it, no.
It's pretty, pretty bumpy in there. But, okay, all right, because I was just wondering, because we didn't, we didn't see anything as far as rimrock goes underneath, you know, when looking down towards the river.
Yeah, there are some areas of exposed rimrock. We've been out there and looked at it, but it needs, that's why we didn't locate it as a part of this project, because it's so individualized on each lot, and we have to go through the LM review for each structure anyway. And so, that's, it will be at that time that we locate it. We went out enough to be sure that we could agree to not seek exceptions to any of the rimrock, so that we made that representation both before the hearings officer and again now. So, we did enough investigation to determine that we can meet the 50-foot setback from any rimrock that we found. But, again, it needs to be located on each individual lot for purposes of the LM review.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Okay, so I think that's good. Thank you for the rebuttal testimony. So, that'll end our oral testimony for today. We'd now discuss briefly, hopefully, what our next steps are. For me, I'm not expecting any more oral testimony. Would you be, are you good ending the oral testimony today?
I'd like to wrap that, yeah, closing the oral record.
Close the oral record. So, now we'll just discuss what we'll do in an open record period for the written...
Thank you, Commissioners. Will Groves again. So, I think I've heard from both opponents and applicant that they're looking for a post-hearing record period. Typically, these are seven days of open record period, seven days of rebuttal, and seven days for final argument. If that's, maybe do kind of a straw poll here, if anybody's got any objections to that calendar or we should discuss it further, hand up.
You mean lawyers or people in the...
It's like we're good.
It's like everybody's good with that. So, we have seven days, okay?
All right. So, that'll put the open record period closing Wednesday, the 6th of November at 5:00 p.m. The rebuttal period, so in that, and during that first open record period, basically, anything can be submitted, evidence, argument, anything that would be, anyone likes to submit. In the next open record period, that's seven days going to November 13th at 5:00 p.m. That's a rebuttal period. That's for the, that's for evidence and test, evidence and argument, rebutting information received during the first period. And then, under state statute and our code, the applicants afforded a final argument, and that would close the 20th of November at 5:00 p.m. I've included over on the table over there, there's an instruction how to get into the Acela site. Many people know how to use the Dial site, but the Acela site is, it's updated more quickly and of higher document quality and in color, so those people who use the Dial site might consider getting a handout and learning about the Acela site. Also important to note...
Is that for us or for other people here? Okay, so that's, it's probably also for us. So, this is where you, people can see the record. Is that what you're saying, basically?
Exactly. Yeah, and any records submitted are made to me, so they can be dropped at the front counter to my attention. Please understand that if you email something and it doesn't receive at our server by 5:00 p.m., it will not be received during the applicable open record period. So, if you mail it even as late as 4:45, sometimes the internet gets clogged up, and we've had people have materials not arrive on time. So, don't mail it 4:59. And if you've got any questions, I'm your point of contact, so please give me a call, send me emails, and let me know I can help.
Okay. Thank you. So, it sounds like we've got that taken care of for the record. I want to thank everybody that's come today and testified. I know some of you have been involved in this a long time, and I know there's a lot of passion about it, but I think we've been really informed and hopefully come up to speed on a lot of the issues, so we can make an informed decision, so, thank you.
There we go.
And we'll be adjourned for the day.
Thank you, Will.